Right here.
One last call for anybody that would like to sign up for public participation tonight. For the public for this town meeting, for the public meeting. Walter, Tom, Tom's grabbing, and he'll give it to you.
Oh, sure.
Again, if you so choose to, we have masks available here for those that are vaccinated. Those that are unvaccinated, you are required to wear a mask. Okay. We all can stand for the pledge, please. Councilman Cosgrove, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our home.
We're having a moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces and our first responders. Thank you. And before we start our public comment with our public meeting, there's been duly warned, I'd like to give some brief backgrounds so that the audience here, those watching and those in the audience, can get a better understanding of tonight. Tonight, we are addressing the reservoir dam. And there's been some conjecture on whether we keep the dam and repair the dam with American relief funds, or we tear the dam down. So I'd like to do is have Jack Healy come up, our DPW engineer, give a little brief synopsis. And as he's bringing up here, I also want to give the town some history as well. The first is the Declaration of Covenant and Conservation Easement. And this what was done when the town did take over this parcel. I'd like to read just a couple of things from this, just as background. The first, it says, "Whereas the declarant wishes to preserve in perpetuity the property in its current natural state for open space and/or recreational purpose, as the term is defined in section 1643B and 1643F of the Connecticut General Statutes, revision of 1958 as amended. Section two, purpose: It is the purpose of this declaration to assure that the property will be kept forever in its natural state for open space and/or recreational purposes. For the purpose of this declaration, open space and/or recreational purposes means property permanently dedicated to public parks or forests or natural areas, included but not limited to reservoirs and water company land. Which property shall be preserved predominantly in its natural scenic and open space condition, which may allow for camping, hiking, forestry, fishing, wildlife, and natural resource conservation. Under no circumstances shall the property be used for any other purpose, and all other buildings shall be prohibited except as may be required for source protection and to meet water quality standards if used as a public water supply." So there's been some conjecture on social media that these properties would at some point be houses. That is absolutely 1,000 percent ridiculous. This is reservoir property. It's a beautiful piece of property. Most of you live up there, know it, and know it as a wonderful resource. But I want to let you know that the town under Mayor Murphy, it's in here. It's a covenant. So that can never happen. So just so everybody knows. I also asked Jim Furlough, our inland wetlands officer, to opine on dam removal of reservoir number four. I've been asked to comment on the wetland and water course aspects associated with the dam removal of reservoir four. A project of the magnitude of a dam removal and subsequent draining of the lake will fall under the jurisdiction of the State of Connecticut DEEP Dam Safety Division, which has sole jurisdiction of the dam construction, maintenance, and removal. Deep Dam Safety may request local permitting for those impacts to wetlands and water courses that may not directly be related to the dam's removal. Wetlands and water courses have a host of functions that will need to be addressed with a dam removal project. First and foremost is a significant alteration of habitat going from the current lake established around 1900. So for those that don't know the new math, right? We are now in the year 2021. This was done in 1900. So, that's 121 years ago. Hmm. Dam was done 121 years ago.
It's a long time.
Right, Katie? Pretty amazing. "To the original narrow stream corridor, fisheries, reptile, and amphibian habitat will be completely changed, which will have some influence on the upland and echotone habitats that have become home to migrating terrestrial species, depending on the lake and its shadows for food and breeding purposes. Both aquatic diversity and abundance as well as total wildlife diversity and abundance will be affected. Flood protection and prevention will be altered with the removal of the dam, which has metered storm water flow acting as a water flow speed bump. Conversely, a jam of this size is considered a flood hazard if it breaches or fails during a storm event. A deluge of water from dam failure may have more significant downstream impact than storm event flooding. The dam removal may result in downstream properties that have had the benefit of reduced storm flows and velocity for decades, seeing additional stream edge erosion as a severe storm event speed bump will be eliminated. Nutrient removal will be reduced as the lake acts as a sediment storage basin and edge vegetation utilizes the nutrient load for plant growth, which in turn is eaten by grazing animals, fish, and other aquatic life. Removal of the lake will alter water recharge and discharge for both groundwater and stream flow. Groundwater recharge is increased with the presence of the lake as an impoundment holds the water, making more water available to soak into the ground for longer periods of time. However, during the dry season, the lake may prevent discharge to the stream, making the stream more intermediate below the dam, altering the original national functions of the stream. Recreational activities associated with the lake such as boating and fishing will be eliminated by removal of the dam. The Deep Dam Safety Division will also consider other logistical requirements for the dam's removal. Water handling, sedimentation, and erosion controls, dredging, and stream bed restorations are critical aspects that will need to be addressed. Properly de-watering a lake of this size would be critical to avoiding downgrade negative impacts to the stream. This lake has multiple water supply streams feeding it, and the dam blocked the mainstream to create the lake, establishing storm event capturing of flows so that the downgrade in stream and lakes are not negatively impacted by hydraulic dredging of the work area is critical. Sedimentation and erosion controls would be necessary as the area to be de-watered contains highly erodible soils consisting of palm-bottom mud without any stabilizing vegetation or soil components. This area should be temporarily fenced off for safety reasons, as this is a public park and persons venturing in this area may get stuck in the mud or otherwise injured. Dredging and reshaping the land from its current impound and slope and lake basin back to a more natural contour is a challenge, given the type of soil that will be encountered. In addition, the existing infrastructure must all be decommissioned. The stream bed will need to be restored back to its original contour and rock base to avoid hydraulic dredging and significant erosion. This will need to be done on the inlet streams that currently supply the lake. Most of the items above will need to be addressed to some extent, whether or not this dam removal or dam project. And then Jim had said, any questions, feel free to contact him. I also have a text from our fire marshal, Kevin Reynolds. And I had asked Kevin, and Kevin had opined back, "In regards to the reservoir, it is a valuable water source for the fire department to fight fires in that section of town." There's a lot of residential homes in that area. So Jack, if you could give us an overview on behalf of DPW concerning the dam being repaired, the dam being taken down.
Gladly, Mayor. Good evening. Anyway, the dam is under, as Jim pointed out, we are required to have a permit through the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. As part of that, we have to, the town is required to do periodic inspections. During those periodic inspections, it has come back to the town that the dam, over time, has aged and is in poor condition. It is considered a Class B hazard. That is not the highest hazard in the state. It's a significant hazard, but it's not the top hazard. A Class B dam would, if it was to be released, would cause extensive property damage, minimal to homes, mostly to trees and to the banks and things like that. And there is concern that it would have impact on downstream structures, culverts, bridges, and things like that. That's how they classify. So if you look on DEP's website, it's a Class B hazard. As part of this, we had talked also, the town has insurance policies with KERMA. The town had received notification from KERMA that they were going to reduce or eliminate the insurance to the town if the issues with the dam were not corrected. We put together a plan and submitted it to KERMA, and we were able to maintain the insurance. We've told them what we were planning on doing. Since then, we have done several things which already give us much more comfort as far as controlling the dam. The dam has a valve in the bottom of it, down 40 feet. It was put in in 1913. So, you know, I don't know what I'm going to look like in 108 years, but the valve was inoperable. And the last two, in the last month, we've been able to get Dayton Construction to go down there a few times. We are now able to operate the valve fully. We were able to drop the dam, was it Mike, three inches? Three inches in a matter of, what, two hours? Two hours. So we can now control the elevation of the dam. That is a big step forward, we're able to do that. We also, Mike and the Public Works Department located what used to be the distribution line of the dam and exercised that valve. So now we have the ability to, and we're going to modify that pipe, and we're now able to have two ways of controlling the elevation of the dam. The issue with the dam primarily lies with a couple of things. One, the backside of the dam, the slope of that is too shallow, I mean, excuse me, too steep. But that is, there are ways to control that. We are getting some seepage through that. I've talked with the engineers. They say it's something to be wary of, but it's not of immediate concern, but we are watching that. So that would be corrected if we were to add material to the backside of the dam. The second thing, the channel leaving the dam was greatly eroded, and I got a lesson on the dam today from Mr. Lilis, and he said that that was caused in 1955, in the 55 flood. As we know, that was a very unusual storm, very unusual time. But that channel is greatly eroded. But it is something that I've worked on before, not here, but in other towns, where we, there are ways of re-engineering that slope, putting in between large rocks and some riprap, removing some of the old trees and handling that. There are two pipes that exit the dam after the weir. Those pipes have separated over time. They need to be either lined or replaced. We can look at, we're looking at lining those and extending those pipes. And the last thing is, the weir itself is in poor condition. If anybody goes up there, you would notice that the stone, the masonry, is in poor condition. It says in the early 2000s, I'm not sure the exact date, that there was a steel structure there to reinforce it. Ultimately, that weir box is going to have to be replaced, redesigned, and re-engineered. We are working with a company called Tatum Howard. They are our engineers. This is what they do. Bill Andres has been down that valve pit many times in the last 20 years, and has done a lot of work up there for us. He has been inspecting it and working with us. We are currently, we are in compliance with the DEP permit. We have submitted, we have just recently renewed the EAP Emergency Action Plan and submitted that to Bridgewater, and they've signed off on it. We've done the inspection. We have, we now have the valves operable. I'm talking to Mike. We need to replace the two tops on the structures. We're going to do that shortly. And we're going to start, excuse me, DPW is going to start removing the trees around the, after we get the permits for inland wetlands to do, we're going to start removing the trees around the exit path. So we have a path, we have a plan going forward, and again, the estimates are rough, but as I told the mayor, and I think I've told the town council, the estimate is about $1.2 million.
And Jack, the $1.2 million, so that everyone in the audience and those who are watching, $1.2 million would bring the dam up to where it needs to be, correct?
That is what we believe would bring the dam up to.
Which would be good for the next 50 to 100 years?
50 to 100 years. And Walter asked me what's the difference. I mean, I won't be here, but I estimate between 50 and 100 years, it should be fine, depending on water flow.
So we have the ability to use American relief funds that would cost the taxpayer no money and bring a dam up to 100 to 50 to 100 years additional lifespan?
Yep.
So that people in our town can enjoy this wonderful asset. Fishing, camping, Boy Scouts are up there, doing a great job, I got to say, clearing trails and putting wonderful things that they do with their Eagle Scout projects.
Put a bridge out there for us, a little walking bridge for us.
Yep. Okay. All right. We'll ask questions after. I'd like to hear from the public who's been here waiting. Dave? Yes. Absolutely. I would think that the council that's here would acquiesce with the start date of our town council meeting to acquiesce to that. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Walter, can you start us off, sir?
All right, Mr. Mayor. Mike Sinello, please.
Just remember to give me your name and address, please, for the record.
All right, Mike Sinello, 111 Willow Springs. I'll just be very brief, because it looks like there's a long night, a long line tonight. So as part of our final test of multi-destination broadcasting, we are going to be streaming to Taylor Media's Facebook page as well as YouTube. So everyone watching at home, if you're watching on Facebook, if you're watching on YouTube, links to either destination are in this video's description, and we'd love to get your feedback on all of this. We can't do, we can't improve unless we get your feedback, even if it's critical. So guys, please do let us know where there's, what you don't like, what you like. Let us know what you see. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'm Bill Devlin. I've lived in New Milford since 1984, and I'm primarily here to argue against any action, excuse me, to remove the reservoir dam.
Bill, your address, please.
3 Warmog Lane. The reservoir pond, I believe, is one of New Milford's true gems, an oasis, one of the few places in town that is truly quiet. But nature's quiet is deceptive, because a lot of people use this pond. I think a lot of people, a lot of them are here tonight. Fishing, kayaking, tubing, even swimming, I've seen in the pond. Along its shores, families picnic, people walk their dogs, hike the perimeters, leaf peep, just come there for a quiet place on their lunch hour to have an unhurried meal. I've been told in people, that in winter, people use the pond for skating and ice fishing. Reservoir pond supports a healthy ecosystem, a system that is based on the presence of the pond's deep water. Aquatic insects and plants support numerous species of fish that in turn attract great blue herons and black-crested cormorants, several species of turtles, including a large snapper that has probably lived in there since 1900, was inhabited. Healthy stands of cattails provide a habitat for red-winged blackbirds. Families of ducks and geese raise their young there. Beaver were active until they were removed a few years ago. To protect this ecosystem and to preserve it for paddling and fishing, for the past four years, I've taken it upon myself to pull invasive water chestnut from it, a task that took many hours. This prolific plant has destroyed several local ponds. I would like to address a few points that I heard brought up at the last council meeting on October 12th. One concerns the wisdom of removing dams. I belong to American Rivers, an organization that advocates removal of dams in general. But these are on rivers, and they block fish spawning runs. Ironically, the DEP, which is also in favor of removing some dams, produces a paddling guide that encourages quiet water paddling on a number of former reservoirs around the state created by dams. For instance, Lake Wintergreen in Hampton, the Scoville Reservoir in Walcott, both of which I've paddled, and which also feature walking trails around their perimeters. Reservoir Pond is kind of like those places, only on a smaller scale. Removing this dam will displace a lot of wildlife and only create several small brooks, some spring-fed, that unite here to create Town Farm Brook. My assumption is that they will not support fish like the pond does, and certainly not a salmon or shad run. Destroying a thriving ecosystem on the premise that it may somehow improve the ecosystem brings to mind that quote from the Vietnam War, "We had to destroy the village in order to save it." I wrote about five minutes worth of stuff here, which I'm going to just cut down to three minutes. Just a couple of questions I'd like to raise. Is the pond a potential source of?
You have your actual and half minute, sir.
Okay. 30 seconds. Is it a potential source of water? The change over to underground aquifers near Route 7 by the local water company occurred in the mid-1980s, which means that I've certainly drunk water that originated from this reservoir. As we've heard tonight, the fire department values this pond as a source of water for themselves. it wouldn't meet contemporary water quality standards unless treated, it seems that if Lake Candlewood remains a designated backup source of water for the city of Danbury, as I know it once was, and I believe still is, would it not be prudent to preserve this reservoir as a backup emergency source for the town?
Bill, can you adjourn your shot, please?
I will. On the last bit of this, I've served on the Wetlands Commission as a member, an officer in both Brookfield and New Milford. Can't imagine an honest Wetlands Commission going along with taking out this dam and decimating a viable, thriving ecosystem built on this pond, a popular source of recreation and spiritual refreshment. Thank you.
You want to submit those for the record?
Excuse me?
You want to submit those for the record?
I would.
I could also keep you a little-
Thank you.
Matthew Pig, please.
Good evening. My name is, good evening. My name is Matthew Pig, and I'm a resident of 22 Dormin Hill Road, and I've came here to speak today about what the New Milford reservoir means to me. The New Milford reservoir, to me, means a place where I'm able to hang out with my friends, go enjoy nature, and get away from my phone, because there's not much staff and service there. So it's normally just me and my friends. And it's typically, like I've heard many people say, a quiet place, and where people get to just think about their thoughts, and just relax there. It's no chaos, no horns weeping, no traffic, no cars, just them and nature. And to me, I do fishing there, I've done mountain biking, I've hiked there, I've stayed there from one to dark, and it's just been, the reservoir has just been a great place to make memories with my friends. Thank you.
Michael Saunders.
Hello, I'm Michael Saunders from 6 Warmog Lane. And just to touch on with what Matt just said, and how the reservoir means to me, it's just a place to relax. I like fishing there often, because just getting away from schoolwork or projects I have to finish up, something to just clear my mind, and might just go out with the family as well, maybe just have them feel the same as well. And with my friends Matt, Shane, and Brett, we like going fishing and relaxing as well. And I just feel the touch up with, if you were to drain the reservoir and take away the dam, you're losing all the fish, birds, turtles, vegetation that was at that reservoir, and now you just have this lonely pond, so, or stream. So I just wanted to touch up on that, and thank you.
Thank you.
Brett Perron.
My name is Brett Perron of 34 Perry Drive, and I also would like to touch up on what my friends have said, that the reservoir is an amazing place to be calm and get away from life. To add on, the reservoir is really good if you want to enjoy the outdoors. Me, along with the Boy Scouts, have also favorited part of the camping there. And to finalize my short paragraph up, well, you know what, that's actually all. Thank you.
James Hanrahan.
So there's no phone service up there, can we send all the kids up there?
James Hanrahan, 23 Orchard Heights. I'm Mr. Mayor and the Town Council. Thank you for this opportunity to be able to address you. I've been fortunate enough to be involved with the reservoir since 2008. I'm one of the Friends of the Reservoir. We help the town keep and maintain the trails, et cetera, around there. We've been involved with the Boy Scouts that do their Eagle Scout projects, et cetera. Looks like we're going to have to spend money regardless, to either maintain the dam or to remove the dam. If we remove the dam, we lose. There are unknown factors, such as how is the groundwater going to be affected? Those are unknowns. What we do know is what we have at the moment. We've seen it, we've enjoyed it. So my vote is to spend money, but spend it wisely. Invest in what we have, and not create a whole lot of unknown problems in the future. Thank you very much.
Russ Postauer.
Hi, Russ Postauer. I live at 224 Candlewood Lake Road North. I also am a member of the Friends of the Reservoir. Everybody's speaking things I would have said. I know you only hear repeats. Mayor's comments about all the volunteers have been up there, I'm one of those. And there's been a lot of people up there doing a lot of work, and they're still continuing. We're still doing some work up there to try to get the town in a position where it can be easily maintained. My concern then would be, take the dam down, be concerned, you're not going to be able to walk around anymore, there's going to be some steep slopes in the way. And that'll put more pressure on the rest of the area up there, to the, I guess it's south. And there's a beautiful Vernal Pool up there, nobody knows about, we need to keep it that way. And, no, I didn't tell you where. You wouldn't recognize unless you really knew Vernal Pools. So another good reason. The pond is beautiful. The DEP inspects it, they come up through there and check fishermen. We found that out when we built the last bridge. He says, "Ah, I don't have to walk around anymore." So it's on their radar, so it's an important aspect. And I was involved with this property way before it became town property, and I know the beauty of it and the enjoyment of walking it, because I did it a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Sally Tellerico, please.
Hey, how are you? Sally Tellerico, 104 Taylor Road. Before I, and I don't have very long to speak, Russ and Dave Lilis, who's in here somewhere, and Ivan Schiff, where is, oh, there he is. They're the ones that built the bridge, and also Richard Thomas, who I don't think is here. They're the ones that built that beautiful bridge over the dam. They did it in a weekend. I just want you to know, they're great guys. Thank you. Okay. Former Mayor Pat Murphy had a vision. When Reservoir Number Four became available, she envisioned that beautiful, tranquil, and untouched area to be a place for the residents of New Milford to enjoy in perpetuity. I also didn't know it was in the deed. Good to know. At an informational meeting with neighbors of Reservoir Number Four and other town residents, the consensus was, "Let's do it," and Friends of the Reservoir was created. We immediately conducted a campaign to raise funds to help purchase the property, and for the projects we knew we would have to do to create what you see there today. We raised thousands of dollars, and the rest was muscle and sweat. During the ensuing years, Friends of the Reservoir, along with Boy Scout Troop 58, created trails, built a bridge across the creek, and put a bridge across the dam, which enabled Friends to complete a trail all the way around the pond. Bog bridges were created, didn't know what those were until now. An additional parking lot was cleared, and a new and safe canoe kayak launch area was designed. All of this work done by the volunteers and Troop 58 Eagle Scout candidates. People from all over the state came. I know this, because when we were at the park, building bridges, clearing trails, and picking up trash, I would talk to people who were there, kayaking, canoeing, and hiking. To a person, they all said it was a beautiful place to spend the day. We're here tonight to ask you not to turn down, tear down the dam. Please don't destroy this beautiful place by taking the jewel out and leaving a muddy, mosquito-infested hole in the middle of a place that is loved by so many, thank you all, residents who spend time there every day. Take a look around town, and you see backhoes clearing land for more buildings and homes. We need to protect places like the Reservoir Park. Do not vote to tear down this dam, vote to repair it, and preserve the Reservoir Park as it is today for generations to come. Thank you very much.
Sally, you have a question?
I'm, oh, you want this? Okay.
Second.
I would like to extend the hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, Walter.
Kathy Osnan.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Osnan, and I live at 10 Indian Ridge Road in New Milford. I'm here because I too support the reservoir, and I am so proud that we have youths that come to the meeting. This is such a good thing for our future, and we need to protect the future for them and for their children, so we continue this legacy with this reservoir. I truly believe that we should use the American Relief Fund if that's available, and it won't cost the taxpayers a dime. That is a win-win for the youth, for the future, and for all of us. I too go up there, I have hundreds of pictures that I've taken up there, and you do not have cell service over there, which is great, because you can unplug. I go fishing there with my husband, he can relax, because he's not getting bugged by any work texts or anything else. So it's one of the few places in the town that you really can go and just relax and enjoy yourself. So I loved what Mr. Devlin said, all the support that he came up with and all his information, the fact that the fire department needs this. What if it's your house, that's the structure fire? There's people here who have lost their homes to fires. It's not something you want to experience. You want to be able to have that resource. We cannot take this away. So I 100% support this. I'm shaking, but, you know. Anyway, thank you for the time and allowing us to speak and to have this meeting, to open it to the public, because there were so many rumors going around. So thank you for allowing it. And again, you guys are so wonderful. I'm so proud of each of you guys for getting up here and speaking. Good job. So thank you.
Ivan Schiffman, please.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, Council, pleasure to be here. So much has been said already.
Sorry, give me your name and address for the record.
My name is Ivan Schiffman, 8 Gate House Road. Thank you, sorry. I've been fortunate to be born and raised in this town. For the past 14 years, I've been a neighbor and friend of the reservoir. Introduced by my father-in-law, Dave, to the reservoir, and I'm going to just sort of make this short and say, in my life, I've always took pride in doing the right thing. And at this point, I think a lot of people have already said all the details, but I think it's imperative that you all do the right thing and preserve this treasure for our town. Truly is a gem, and it's all of our neighbors. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Kathy Sederlin, please.
I'm Kathy Sederlin, 20 Paper Mill Road, and I just want to add to what these young people were saying about the reservoir. When I've taken young friends up there, children, it's, of all the parks in New Milford, it's really the best place to introduce young people to kayaking and canoeing and fishing, because it's so accessible. It's very different from land demming. You know, you could say, "Well, you can just take your boat out on Candlewood." No, there's waves out there, there's motorboats. On the reservoir pond, it's just a great place for all these young people and scouts to be there in their best place. And so I just would reemphasize what everybody else has said. And also, it's, the natural, the animal, plants and animals are very well-established there, and I would like to see them continue to be able to live where they are living now. Thank you.
Thank you. Danell Placella, please.
Good evening. Danell Placella, 7 Gate House Road. So in April of 2021, Governor Lamont presented Connecticut with a plan to use American Recovery's plan funds. Within the governor's plan, he bulleted five sections. The second and third directly apply to the reservoir. The second bullet in his plan is investing in our future, and further indicates the theme of upgrading and investing in cities and towns through infrastructure, such as this dam. The third bullet point is creating a more affordable Connecticut, but within that step is a sub-bullet to use the fund to address mental health impacts of COVID-19. I don't think that I need to tell anybody in this room how parks really help mental health during this pandemic. The ARPA money is a one-time revenue influx. The dam repair, as it's being presented, is an unplanned expense that the town has not budgeted for. So here we have a one-time revenue influx and a one-time unplanned expense. One of the things the news has been saying when ARPA funds were distributed to the country, throughout the country, is what's known as a revenue pitfall. If you use one-time revenue funds on planned and planned expenditures, you won't have that revenue in the future, and you will have revenue pitfalls in future years. Although ARPA money is unique, and it does allow us to supplant expenses, it is always recommended for federal funds not to supplement, but, not to use it to supplement, but to supplant expenses. This is generally good for our finances. So, and also thinking about the funding of this project, I looked at our town financial statements. I see that the audited financial statements as of June 30th are posted on the website. I couldn't find June 2021. So the 20th is, 2020 is out there. And I see that the town has an enormous amount of excess fund balance and a really big amount of unassigned fund balance. So those expenses that need to be repaired, infrastructure, such as roofs and things like that, that should be thought about in the future, we should be using those unassigned fund balances for. And the ARPA funds, it just seems like a no-brainer to me. Thank you.
Can you also submit that? Thank you. Lee Beferman, please.
Good evening, members of the Town Council. For the record, my name is Lee Beferman, 60 Colonial Ridge Drive, Gaylordsville. I am tonight reading comments from Julianne Bailey, who is a former volunteer and founder of the Friends of the Reservoir. She's unable to be here this evening. But I do want to say that keep the reservoir the way it is. Repair or decommission, I believe there are strong reasons for repair, quality of life and economic. As one of many volunteer residents who worked over five years, starting in 2006, at the beautiful 25-acre pond at Reservoir Park on Second Hill Road, raising funds from area residents to supplement the $1 million-plus Connecticut State Open Space Grant to purchase the 170-plus acre property, build a network of trails with signage, a non-motorized boat slip, wooden and metal bridges across bogs and streams, and a parking lot, I believe strongly in repairing, not decommissioning, the dam that created that 25-acre pond that so many enjoy for boating, catch-and-release fishing, bird watching, and viewing from multiple perspectives and in multiple seasons. There are two drivers for my conclusion, says Ms. Bailey. Quality of life. Residents in the know have been enjoying reservoir ponds since the early 20th century, when it was created by Damning Town Creek. Since 2006, when the park property was acquired by the town, after a crowded and almost unanimous public meeting vote, that pond has been opened to the public. Hundreds of residents and out-of-town visitors have enjoyed a spectacular recreational asset that's less than 10 minutes from the green. They can admire the pond, especially beautiful when the trees along the banks burst into glorious fall color, and the waters of the pond range from blue to black, depending on the season, to teach children to fish or enjoy a quiet morning or afternoon in a kayak or canoe, sliding down easily on the boat slip we built. As an economic driver, make no doubt about it, we compete and will continue to compete with neighboring towns like Brookfield, Beth-
life and economic. As one of many volunteer residents who worked over five years, starting in 2006, at the beautiful 25-acre pond at Reservoir Park on Second Hill Road, raising funds from area residents to supplement the $1 million-plus Connecticut State Open Space Grant to purchase the 170-plus acre property, build a network of trails with signage, a non-motorized boat slip, wooden and metal bridges across bogs and streams, and a parking lot. I believe strongly in repairing, not decommissioning, the dam that created that 25-acre pond that so many enjoy for boating, catch-and-release fishing, bird watching, and viewing from multiple perspectives and in multiple seasons. There are two drivers for my conclusion, says Ms. Bailey. Quality of life. Residents in the know have been enjoying reservoir ponds since the early 20th century when it was created by Damington Creek. Since 2006, when the park property was acquired by the town after a crowded and almost unanimous public meeting vote, that pond has been opened to the public. Hundreds of residents and out-of-town visitors have enjoyed a spectacular recreational asset that's less than 10 minutes from the green. They can admire the pond, especially beautiful when the trees along the banks burst into glorious fall color and the waters of the pond range from blue to black depending on the season, to teach children to fish or enjoy a quiet morning or afternoon in a kayak or canoe, sliding down easily on the boat slip we built. As an economic driver, make no doubt about it, we compete and will continue to compete with neighboring towns like Brookfield, Bethel, Newtown, for new businesses, for new families, and hopefully new young workers interested in settling in western Connecticut. A big part of the equation, along with quality of schools, availability and affordability of housing, safety, friendliness of the community, and ease of lifestyle, is the amount and accessibility of the outdoors, one of our town's big attractors, a point where we are totally and utterly competitive. Without that spectacular pond, Reservoir Park would lose its appeal.
Lea, he's got two and a half minutes.
Okay, I'll read one more paragraph. The cost of repairing versus decommissioning the dam, a preliminary estimated to be roughly the same. Repairing the dam and spillway represent a significant $1 million expenditure, but decommissioning the dam has other costs when all component parts are considered. The removal of over 100 years of sediment that's accumulated behind the dam, re-landscaping, reforested, the dried mud flats that were left behind. This is not what New Milford wants. And then there's more.
Beth Faldo, please.
Hi, everyone. Beth Faldo, 11 Bullymuck Road in New Milford. I just want to say, you know, apart from all of the economic benefits, the environmental benefits, the safety benefits, we can hear how beloved this place is. Everyone here is supporting the park. It's become a part of who we are. During the pandemic, it's where we went to find solace. And I think it's completely appropriate to use those relief funds because it does give us that peace and escape from the anxiety and the fear that's going around. So, that's all I wanted to say, but please preserve the park.
Jeff Senkowitz, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Jeff Senkowitz, 68 Marwick Manor, New Milford. Perhaps I'm the only person in the room who's never been to the reservoir and never likely to go, but I'll channel my wishes through the boys. I've always been in favor of the purchase of that. I've always been in favor of its maintenance. If, in fact, the town doesn't have the money through the American Rescue Fund, I don't know if we still have any money in waste management. The fund, you should use it to fix it up. Because if you don't, you'll spend $1 million decommissioning it and have nothing. If you do, even if it costs $2 million, you'll have something for the next 50 or 100 years. When the land was purchased in 2005, the newspaper Nancy Hudson wrote, "The hike down a muddy footpath off Second Hill Road on Friday was like a journey into a secret garden. The pristine beauty made a perfect backdrop for the blue crane that dipped its wings as it glided across the reservoir. Only three miles from downtown, these 170 acres of untouched land where people have fished, hunted, and hiked are a sanctuary. On Friday afternoon, Mayor Pat Murphy closed on a $1.94 million deal to buy this tract of land from the United Water Company so it will forever be park and recreational land for the town's families." I also was going to quote from the covenants and restrictions, but the mayor has covered that. At the time of the purchase, it was intended that it be maintained in perpetuity in its current natural state, which is, which was a pond and reservoir. The article then goes on. Sally Talarico gushes about the purchase, so I won't go into that. But Sally did say, "This is too beautiful for words," said Talarico. "One of the driving forces behind a $300,000 fundraising endeavor with the Weyantunak Heritage Trust to assist the town with the purchase." So it isn't just the town's money. It was private money being spent, and charitable money being spent to buy that for recreational conservation purposes. And United Water Companies, we used to know Kevin Moran. I haven't seen him in years, but United Water Company's Vice President, Kevin Moran, called the town's purchase of the property one of the best events that has occurred in his years with the company. And he was there from, at least from the late 60s, early 70s, when I first came to town. "This is such a win-win-win," Moran said. My sentiments is that you should preserve this asset for the town, whether I ever use it or not. It's not an asset for just me. It's an asset for everybody. The cost of preserving the dam is next to nothing in terms of the lifetime benefit that you'll have from it. I have a property in upstate New York that's on a pond that's, has a dam. And the dam needed repair. It cost $1.2 million. Major repair. So it took about five or six years and a lot of anguish and negotiations with the state DEC, but the dam got repaired. And instead of the water going up and down, the water's at a fixed level. They've got a wonderful spillway. They don't have to worry about the dam collapsing. It actually collapsed twice in the early 20th century. But it's a great, it's a great asset for me up there. Keep this asset for the boys in the back of the room. Thank you.
Walter?
You under the list, Mr. Mayor.
Is that both pages, Walter? Is there a town council?
Yes, page one and two.
Do we have anybody else that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
I clearly signed the wrong sheet. I made your second meeting a little shorter. I'm Pat Morabito, 145 Second Hill Road, right across the street from the reservoir. I took some notes here as I was listening to everyone and I'm here speaking on behalf of myself, my wife Kim, who's here, my son Shane, whose friends came up here and spoke, my three daughters who aren't here. I think about the views out my window when the leaves set. And I'll be honest, I got a little teary-eyed listening to the thought that, sorry, that maybe this wouldn't be here. Because I think about the impact that this has all had on everybody over the last two years of what we've gone through. And the increase, a lot of people will complain about the noise they hear from their house, right? Someone complains my neighbor's too loud. Well, all of you in this room are my neighbors. Like, I listen to how you go through the reservoir. And I love that there's no self-service there. Because I walk down because I can't call my son. So I walked down there to go see him. So I think about it. That 150, 50 to 100 years, right, to spend money that we have to preserve this beautiful asset, as well said before, it's an asset that we have, right? I think about that turtle that I've seen there. I've only seen turtles like that alive in two other places in a body of water. One was at Mount Tom on a paddleboard. I was on my paddleboard out there. I saw it. And out in Maui. So it's crazy. When I think about, that's how I relate when I think about that, right? I can't imagine the wildlife. I see the bear that's picking through my garbage every day. Okay, one year I put it on the recyclable bins every day and it was nice. Sometimes it throws it all over the place and I'm cleaning up. So I think about the bears, the deers, the animals that we're going to dislocate. It's just, I can't imagine it. I think about family that come up here and friends that come up here all the time. The first thing I do is I walk them down there to show them this beautiful piece of land we have, right? Because it's amazing to see the moonlight on it, see the sunlight, see the, see the horizon over there while you watch the sun. So I think about this big piece of land and how well-maintained it is. And it's because of our friends at the reservoir and how much they've been committed. My neighbor, Rich, who has helped build that bridge with everyone else that was mentioned, with Russ and David Lilis, when I think about that. That park is so well-maintained for the size of land it is. If you look at it, some of the other parks we have in New Milford, and we have beautiful pieces of land in New Milford. All the dirt roads, we have all the parks that we all get to access. But if you think about, that park is so clean because of how well we take care of it and how well we've taken care of it. So my ask to the council is just do what's right for the community for the next 100 and 200 years. We can't get rid of that reservoir. It has to stay. So, thank you.
If anyone else would like to address. Dave?
Hi, my name is David Lilis. I live at 10 Gate House Road in New Milford. I would like to share with you 75 years of my history in having lived or owned property adjacent to reservoir number four. I was born and grew up as a farm boy on Lilis Road. I became a developer and a builder and a conservationist. It's, I would like to, for you to think about these facts that I'm stating. This reserve reservoir has been essential for the town for 100 years. Our forefathers designed, built, and protected this pristine body of water for our future use. It was known as the New Milford Water Company. It was managed by the New Milford Foundry and sold to United Water Company. United Water Company put this property on the market in the early 2000s. Recognizing the beauty and the benefits of this property, I initially brought it to the town. Excuse me a second. I will turn this paper in if it'll come apart. It's for the need to purchase this crown jewel. After a series of town meetings, New Milford approved the reservoir purchase. Immediately after that, my wife and I were the first to donate $20,000 of private money to become members of the Friends of the Reservoir. This protected, pristine body of water can become the future water of the town in New Milford. I believe that the easements are still in place connected to the town water system. Our water systems currently are drilled wells. The wells are drilled along Route 7 north, which collect the runoff from Route 7. I think it could be salt, sand, oil, et cetera. And then it's on the other side of these wells, or the Houstonic River, which we all know it's, has plenty of PVCs in. And finally, on the other side of Route 7 north, there's the salt shed from the state. Plus our aquifer, there's three commercial dumps that are abandoned. So why would we in the world think of draining this pristine body of water that's been protected for 100 years? $1.2 million to repair the dam? How much is water worth? Certainly, it's worth a lot more than $1 million and then some. Once again, we would like to help. My wife and I own the property directly to the water basin, we're to the south and the west of the dam. And we're willing to work with the town any way, shape, or form to mitigate the problems that are in front of us. We have put a lot of time, material, passion, money, and labor into this wonderful neighbor that can't speak for itself, but we can.
Dave, you're over two and a half minutes.
Thank you. It's, I appreciate your time and thank you for getting us together tonight and allowing us to do this. This is a crown jewel that is a situation that really needs to be saved. I'll tell you one more piece of information about it. I was the first to bring George Doring, who sat alongside of Jeff and had the courage to win our $43, $43 million of waste management money. When I brought George to see it, I can still remember his eyes and his words. He said, "This is the picture postcard of what I dreamed that some of our funding would be put away for." So, thank you for your time.
Do we have anyone else that would like to address the public meeting? Is someone back here?
Hello.
Hello.
You ever get in front of a crowd and realize you were really bad at public speaking? So, my name is, my name is Marco Olve. I just bought a home two years ago. Up it's 200 Chestnutland Road in New Milford. It seems like a very silly idea to go through with destroying this dam or anything. I came to this home. What was so great about New Milford was it was, there was a lot of nature. There was a lot of just good feeling and everything with this. And reservoir was one of the biggest things. It's one of the reasons. I just bought my wife a kayak. Like, come on, guys. But like, just as that aspect, it's such a good draw for people, for tourism or anything, if you want to go, the economics of it. But like, it's such a great piece of land. It's very puzzling to me, why would we get rid of it in any way, especially if we have the possibility of the funds that won't come out of my pocket? That sounds fantastic. But like, it's just, it's a, it's a great piece of property and everyone here seems to all, mostly anyway, I won't talk for everyone, but everyone who's come up so far has, all of us have agreed that we should really keep this land and keep the environment going and what we need, what we see and with how much destructions in the world at the moment. That's really nice to think of little frogs having a home, to be fair. But that's, that's all I have to say. But thank you so much for this time. Thank you so much. Oh, sure. L-A-L-V-A-Y. It's a little weird name.
Thank you. And do we have anyone else that would like to speak to the meeting?
Michael Thibodeau, 26 Maplewood Drive. And I just wanted to touch upon one thing that I'd heard here tonight. I've only been to the reservoir just a couple of times in the 18 years or so that I've lived here. But I heard somebody mention tonight about mental health and COVID-19. In the last two years, you know, the kids have been studying remotely. They weren't in school with their friends and all. And I have two high school kids at the time that were home remotely, completely. And my oldest son was home from UConn and he was remote as well because the time he had spent at the university, he was locked in his dorm room and it made no sense. But when they came home, they had a place to escape to. They started hiking down at the reservoir. And over this last year and a half, they've, either one or two of them or three of them have taken time away from their day to go down there and hike. And it really had a huge impact on their, on their well-being and their mental health during this pandemic. So I think having a place for our youth, as we heard from them today, to have a place, a safe place, an enjoyable place, a place away from devices, is just so important. And I really saw that impact over this last year and a half. So it really had a beneficial effect on my family and I can see how it's affected the town as well. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the meeting? One of the things we also did was asked those that couldn't make it in attendance tonight to send to the town council their thoughts. I'd like to read these in real quick. James McLaren. "I'm James McLaren, a lifelong resident of New Milford. I'm in favor of keeping the dam. I have lived at 131 Second Hill Road for 57 years. The area around the dam is a nice place for residents to fish, walk on the trails, and kayak. The reservoir is also a water source for any fires in the area. There isn't many areas left in New Milford like it." Next is from Christina Cameron. "I'm writing this email to urge you to all that is necessary to preserve this natural gem that is the reservoir. Do all that is necessary to restore the dam so that the treasure can be used by generations to come and act as a potential water supply to New Milford if ever needed. Removing the dam would be detrimental to the vibrant ecosystem that exists at the reservoir. The reservoir is a magical place for hiking and peaceful enjoyment of aquatic activities. Fishing, kayaking, paddling, boarding, canoeing. I grew up with this treasure in my backyard and visit frequently to regain the childhood sense of wonder in this quiet park where you can really enjoy the natural beauty of New Milford. This beauty does not exist elsewhere in New Milford. Sincerely, Christina." Next is from Doug. I'm going to mispronounce his name. I apologize, Doug, if you're viewing. Berenderson. "Hello, I received a letter asking for my input regarding the fate of Reservoir Four Dam. I live at 114 Taylor Road, approximately half a mile from the reservoir and dam. My family and I have used and enjoyed the reservoir since we moved to New Milford almost a dozen years ago. We have hiked around the reservoir almost weekly and have fished there and ice skated my winter. Recently, my nephew Connor Lou Schmeischer, I'm mispronouncing Connor, your name, and I was there for Eagle Scout, so built a new kiosk there as part of the Boy Scout project. My vote would be to keep the dam and repair it with the allocated funds. New Milford residents enjoy the reservoir every day and there are many species of wildlife that rely on the reservoir for their survival." From Carol Lugo. "Thank you for your recent letter concerning Reservoir Four Dam. My husband and I are unable to attend, but would like to provide our input. We feel that the dam should be repaired using American Relief Funds. I can't think of one reason to tear it down. I have lived across the street since 2003 and think it is absolutely beautiful. There are many wild animals that live there and fear they could possibly damage the ecosystem. I see many people utilize this property year-round. It would be very sad to see this outdoor activity spot changed in any way. We need to preserve this gem and its fresh, clean water." And that's from Carol. And next is- And next is from Bruce and Deborah Robertine. Dear members of the town council, this email is in regards to the dam at the reservoir off Second Hill Road. We will be unable to make the meeting tonight, but wanted to express our opinion. We live down the road from the reservoir here on Second Hill. We love it up there. It is such a beautiful place to take our kids and sometimes even our dogs for a walk around the water. It's a safe place to walk off the road. We enjoy taking our kids and grandchildren there for some fishing. There's always somebody up there, if walking, fishing, or even kayaking, or even just having a picnic. We would really like to see it repaired and not taken down. Why change such a beautiful spot that many people around here use? We are in favor of fixing the dam and absolutely not taking it down. Next is from Robin Galant. Dear Mayor Bass, as an over 50-year visitor to the town of New Milford, I can tell you that I've thoroughly enjoyed using Reservoir Park. It is a great fun to walk and kayak there. It would be deeply disturbing to hear that it has been destroyed. I hope the council wisely votes to preserve this community asset. And then as Sally had talked about before, Mayor Murphy, who is, who is an integral part of the town, getting this wonderful jewel, has also opined, and I'd like to read that into the minutes, from Mayor Murphy. Hi Sally, I don't pay for the news time, so I can't open the story. So I understand it, fix or take out. While I no longer in New Milford, I do have family and friends there, so I think of New Milford often. The Reservoir Park project was a shining example of people from varied paths working together with both public and private monies in cooperation with local and state government to achieve a common goal. The property itself, preserved by a conservation easement, is quite bubonic and is beautifully enhanced by the reservoir, which attracts and supports a variety of birds and animals. Not only do I still believe this is another gorgeous resource in New Milford, but a practical investment as well. For years, there has been a concern about the quality of New Milford's aquifer and the potential for contamination. While I'm sure all protective measures are continually monitored, the reservoir is a great source of potable water in case of an emergency. Being prepared and preserving a water resource is a consideration when the town purchased the property. Unlike busy Candlewood Lake or the swift waters of the Houstonic River, the reservoir provides a relatively safe, quiet environment for learning, practicing, and enjoying non-motorized boating. An afternoon fishing or hiking around the reservoir on trails built by scouts and other volunteers and friends offers people an opportunity to take a moment. Quiet contemplation, gazing across the water, sometimes we need that. I do hope you're able to preserve this valuable resource. I appreciate the work you all do in service to the town. Thank you, Mayor Murphy. Susan Galant. Dear Mayor Bass, as a founding member of the Reservoir Park, I was appalled to hear that there was any discussion at all about destroying such a lovely asset of New Milford. I hope that saner thoughts prevail and the park will be preserved for future generations to enjoy. Failing to repair the dam will cause the area to become a mosquito-infested swamp instead of a wonderful resource for New Milford and surrounding towns. Sincerely, Susan. Next is from Thomas Sullivan. To the New Milford Town Council, I purchased my home in New Milford on February 18th, 2019, right before the pandemic hit. One of the reasons I purchased where I did was due to the proximity of the reservoir that is in question. I am an avid fisherman, along with many hikes around the reservoir for the tranquility of nature. With being in lockdown due to the pandemic, fishing and hiking really kept me from getting into depression or a funk of lack of human contact. These days, kids are being stuck on their phones and computers. We are going to take away a great resource for many younger kids that I see ride there, bike there, even walk there to go fishing. We have a great resource for many reasons, and I strongly suggest the dam gets fixed or repaired. On another side note, I'm not sure if this is still the case, but when you get quotes for home insurance, one thing they look at is water source. That water source can either be a fire hydrant or a body of water where the fire department can pull from a fire structure. So this being said, with all of us paying for more groceries, gas, electric, and taxes, let's not possibly increase our cost of insurance any more than it is. Regards, Tom Sullivan, 92 Lilis Road. Next is from Bevan Lo, 221 Second Hill Road. I am writing to express my grave concern over the potential removal of the dam at Reservoir Park. I frequent the park with my dog several times a week, year-round, and we truly love this park. The removal of the dam would be devastating to the ecosystem and all wildlife. I cannot even fathom the damage and loss of life the dam removal would cause. This is one of the only parks in New Milford that can offer hiking, boating, and fishing. Please do not remove the dam. Next one is from Jeff Billing, or I'm sorry, Martin McMahon. And my name is Martin McMahon. I reside at 115 Taylor Road. My property borders on the reservoir preserve. I have spent over 70 years visiting the reservoir property with all its wildlife and beauty. I am writing to say only option is to save the reservoir. The next is from, where is this one from? Jay King. Good morning, I woke up this morning to find on social media a discussion about potentially removing the dam at Reservoir 4. Let me start by saying I appreciate and fully support those members who are for repairing the dam. The reservoir is an amazing tranquil spot for fishing, hiking, paddleboarding, birdwatching, and swimming. My family and many other families enjoy this little slice of heaven. To remove the dam would have detrimental effects on the environment, not to mention the impact on people who enjoy spending time there. Anyone who would look to remove the dam is not representing the town's people. Thank you, and I trust the right decision will be made. The next is for Roger and Carol Moretz, 1 Possum Lane. Members of the New Milford Town Council, we are Roger and Carol Moretz, 1 Possum Lane, New Milford. Our property runs along Taylor Road and the back property abuts open space which contains the pond known as Reservoir 4. When the water company decided to abandon the reservoirs on Second Hill, the land surrounding Reservoir 4 was initially proposed to be developed as a golf course and subsequently housing development. The town eventually decided to preserve this as open space and purchased it from the water company. The dams on Reservoirs 1 and 2 were breached. Over the years following the purchase by the town, two separate areas have been developed for recreation and several Eagle Scouts projects have enhanced the park, including a kiosk and several water course crossings. The Reservoir Park and fishing areas are attractive areas that provide access to ponds, the pond for hiking, picnicking, kayaking, canoeing, and fishing. A relatively hidden gem, the area is enjoyed by New Milford residents who have discovered this open space for these activities. In conjunction with 154 acres surrounding it, the pond is an integral part of wildlife ecosystem for waterfowl, turtles, salamanders, snakes, fish, deer, bear, bobcats, foxes, turkeys, hawks, and other species too numerous to mention here. The presence of surface water is essential for the maintenance of these populations. There's one other benefit of maintaining the dam at pond, fire control. As council members are aware, there's no public water supply lines in the area. In the event of a major fire, absent the water on Reservoir 4, the fire companies will probably have to fill tankers at the Houstonic River, a trip that takes over 10 minutes one way. Access to the water in the reservoir significantly aids in fighting a major fire. In conclusion, we urge that the council affirm their decision to utilize the funds to provide necessary essential repairs of the dam. This is a decision that will benefit the residents for New Milford for many years to come. Next is for Jill, I'm gonna mispronounce the name and I apologize, Jill, if you're watching. Yancosi. My name is Jill Yancosi. My house is at 147 Taylor Road, which borders the reservoir property. I have a path to the reservoir, went swimming there this summer with my grandson, walked the trail, I've enjoyed its beauty for over 50 years. Whatever it takes, save the reservoir. Rod Crumley, 11 Grants Lane. I received your letter today concerning the dam. Unfortunately, I will be traveling for business next Monday. I'm not aware of the issue with the dam. The dam itself seems to be in good shape, but I'm not an expert. I do see a generator, it looks like a valve or pump getting ready to be lifted for repair, so I assume the trouble is there, not the dam itself. What happens if the repairs are not done? If the money is allocated already, what emergency is threatening those funds? My wife and I enjoy the reservoir almost daily. It's certainly a selling point when we purchase a home on 11 Grant Lane. We meet many people there each day enjoying the park. The wishes of my wife, my dog, and myself would be to preserve the lake. The next is from Pat Galette. I am able to attend Monday's meeting, but I am all for keeping the dam. Do the necessary maintenance, keep this lovely preserve as it is. It's a great nature walk and wonderful gathering place for wildlife. I don't want to lose that. Pat Galette, 119 Old Ridge Road. Next, Terry Lindstrom. We are unable to attend in person the meeting. We would like the dam repaired with American relief funds. Thank you, Eric and Terry and Lindstrom, 2 Possum Lane. Next, Paula Taylor. Hi, I'm a resident close to the reservoir. I'm unable to attend the meeting on Monday. I voted in favor of the town buying that property years ago. It's a beautiful park and a walk there many days a week through all four seasons, and I am in favor of repairing the dam. I don't understand what would be the purpose of removing it. Thank you, Paula Taylor. The next is, let's see. Looks like John Wells. As a resident who lives close to the reservoir, I received a letter informing me of the upcoming town council meeting on this topic. I will not be able to attend, but my wife is, I did want to offer my opinion. I'm very happy the council board of finance approved funding to maintain this beautiful space and would like to see the work get moving. Our family have used the reservoir for many years, around the trail, walking our dogs, swimming. We have introduced a number of people in town to the reservoir who've had, who've used it for canoeing, kayaking, paddleboarding, fishing, ice skating, photography, birdwatching, and picnics with family. The work the scouts have performed over the years at the park have also added. When the pandemic started last year, my work moved from office to my home and it may largely stay that way for the future. Having a space like this so close to home for a quick walk is wonderful. And he's attached a couple of photos. And he just also asked that we keep him informed of the process, 124 Taylor Road. Dave Galette, 119 Old Ridge Road, to the members of the town council. It's come to my attention there are some of you in favor of taking the dam down. Instead of maintaining it, my position is straightforward. Keep the dam, invest in the dam, maintain the dam. It is very rare to live in a community that prides itself in maintaining a recreational environment. This dam water feature should always be viewed as an investment in maintaining that environment. I use the trails around the dam weekly, thoroughly enjoy its beauty. What a shame it would be to destroy this. I can still remember why the town purchased this property to begin with, and this approach goes against that entire principle. Don't be short-sighted, invest in New Milford and invest in the dam. 119 Old Ridge Road. Same one. And then Ryan Messing, 3 Halitz Road. To the council, I'm unable to attend the meeting on Monday, October 25th, to discuss the future of the dam's reservoir number four. I want to express my strong support for the New Milford Town, for the New Milford Town Council and Board of Finance's earlier decision to fund repair of the, using the American relief funding. Our home is located on 3 Halitz Road, which is a short distance from the Reservoir Park. We cherish the reservoir and what it brings to the surrounding area. It is a true gem and should be preserved. My understanding is that the cost to dismantle the dam is equal to the cost of repairing it. So apparently, the skepticism is around the cost to maintain and ensure it. Those raising these questions should consider the long-term costs and impact of dismantling the dam and draining the reservoir, i.e. loss of recreational use, diminished quality of life, environmental impact, usability of the underlying land and surrounding area, and impact to the property value in the area. There would be no turning back or reversing course once this dam is dismantled and the reservoir is drained. The decision to fund repairs of the dam preserves the reservoir not only for today's residents, but for generations to come. Thank you for taking the time to consider these views. We look forward to spending many more days in the years to come enjoying Reservoir Park. Ryan Messing, 3 Halitz Road. And that's all the ones that we have so far that were given to the town council. And if there is no more business, what I would like to do is adjourn this meeting. But before we do, I would like to ask our vice chair, when we do go into meeting, for those that are watching here, to go ahead and suspend the rules and add to this, the town council voting on whether or not to repair or take down the dam.
Certainly.
So that everybody here and those on TV that have come and given their time also have emailed and given the time, can now see exactly what we're gonna do. Because the Board of Finance, the town council already approved the money. So, let's see exactly what we're gonna do. So if you guys can wait, let's adjourn the meeting. Do I have an adjournment? Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now let's start the regular town council meeting. Mr. Bear, can you lead us in the pledge, please?
Mr. Bear?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
We have a moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces and our first response. Thank you, everyone. And do we have anyone else, Walter, that, for town council public participation, that hasn't spoken, and this would be for any other items that are on the agenda? Yep. Absolutely. Okay. So Katie, can you make that motion?
I'd like to move to suspend the rules, to add an item to our agenda for this evening, and that would be to take a vote on the Reservoir Number 4 Dam.
And Katie, I'd also like to ask you to make that the next item on the agenda. So we're not waiting for anybody else. We're just doing it right now.
I was gonna give that item number.
Thank you.
Suspend the rules to add item number 3C. We could, we don't, let's call it 2A. Item number 2A. To vote on the money that was already approved, on whether we will demolish.
To affirm that we're gonna either repair or...
Rare or not.
Correct. Okay. Any discussion, any discussion on the motion to add to the agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Katie, your motion, please.
My motion?
We just add the motion now?
Yes. So we're on item two, which was done, item 2A. Move to vote to maintain, repair Reservoir Number 4 Dam.
Okay. American relief funds.
Which we already voted on last week, the last meeting. Right, yes, using ARPA funds per our meeting of October 12th, 2021.
And we have a second. And Katie, thank you for making the motion. Thank you to the council for amending our agenda. And I'd like to thank the public, both here, ones that wrote in and those that are watching here on TV, getting the input. I'd also like to thank the other two mayors, Mayor Furman and Mayor Murphy, who also, like myself, agree that this is a true treasure. So I want to thank everybody involved. Anybody have any other comments tonight? Mr. Cosgrove?
So, I guess my comments, and I'll try to keep them short because I can't say anything that hasn't been said. But I'm one, like the other gentleman, I had never been up there before. But I did go up there, we could go Sunday, and it is just a gorgeous place. And for a lot of the reasons we should keep it, for a lot of the reasons that were mentioned. But tonight, I heard from three young men. And I specifically use that term, young men, because they spoke with a level of maturity that was, I think, beyond their years. And I'm sure a lot of that is attributed to their parents. But a lot of it is probably attributed to their activities in nature around the reservoir. So for that, more than, I say we should go along with repairing it.
Katie?
I'd just like to say, we talked about this at the meeting on the 12th. We've heard from a large portion of people who are here, people who don't live near the dam, people who live near it, people who couldn't make it. And I think it's time for us to fish or cut bait, right, boys? Let's vote to keep this dam.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very choked up. Everyone who stood up tonight really makes me proud to sit in this seat for 12 years. Those three boys in the back probably had me the most choked up. Hi, guys. This is something that we have had and will continue to have as long as I'm sitting here and as long as the majority of us are here. This is a gem beyond gems. Not only the recreation, the peace, the tranquility, but it's water. It's becoming more valuable than anything else on this planet. It is something that we have here in New Milford where other towns and cities around the country and around the world don't have. And it would be absolutely ludicrous and beyond any thought of comprehension that we would ever take this dam down for some ridiculous reason, especially for politics, which is really how this came up. So I hope we can put that aside and all take a very proud look back at what we have, what we've accomplished tonight and over the last 20 years to have this property. Mr. Lilis, Mr. Posthour, all the folks up there, everyone who is a friend of that. Those three boys in the back and all those boys up there and girls up there that fish. Those three boys in the back and all those boys up there and girls up there that fish and spend time with their families and walk and have that peaceful time. I wish I knew that the cell phones didn't work up there, guys. I would have been up there for quite some time. And I'm gonna send my son up there too, hopefully to fish with you guys. But this is a proud moment for this community, for us to step up and to speak our minds. And I hope it continues for many years to come. We cannot allow stupid things like this to come up and divide us. This is something that is going to be preserved forever. And I'm gonna support this forever. Thank you for coming out, all of you.
Any other comments? Walter?
I'm a little disappointed because I thought we were gonna get fishing rods.
I'm ready to go fishing. We don't get fishing rods?
It's early in the evening yet, Walter. Don't lose hope.
Okay.
I just wanna, uh, second Tom's remarks. This place is clean, pristine, and it's ours. I voted yes to keep it. I'll vote it for the rest as I'm gonna live in New Milford. There's no other way, absolutely no other way. Cheers.
So I, along with, uh, Councilman Castro and another gentleman in the audience who spoke, I'd never been up there.
So I went up there this past weekend, and it's much more than a dam. It, I believe it's part of history in this town. And, uh, I had many people reach out to me and said, uh, hey, what are you guys doing? What's going on? And, uh, two, uh, people really stood out that, uh, that got a hold of me. They happened to live with me. One was my wife and one was my daughter. And my daughter spent many a time up there, and my wife was born and raised, and she's been up there. And so, uh, I believe this is much more than a dam. It's more important to keep this as a town treasure. And so I'll be voting yes, along with the other councilmen. So, thank you to the public for showing, uh, your support. That's what we're here for, for when you come out and you speak to us, we listen. So thank you.
Mary Jane?
So I'd just like to say, I live on a body of water too. I live on the west Aspetac River. And, um, and back where that borders our property, it's been, um, dammed up and we have a lake back out there by the beavers. So if the dam ever breaks, I have nobody to complain to, cause it's the beaver. But we do enjoy it, we love it, and it is a very peaceful place, just like all of you enjoy the reservoir. Um, my only concern at one point was basically, could the money come, instead of using the money from the American Relief Fund, could it come from Waste Management Fund or from the circle? But I do, you know, whatever we're gonna do, I think is fine. And obviously, um, we need more money if it ends up costing us more than one point two million. I would assume that the money could possibly come out of the waste management, cause I think that would be a good resource for that money. But I am totally in support of keeping the reservoir.
Let's vote.
All right.
Let's vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your, thank you for your input.
Thank you for your vote.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Thanks, Sally. And we're gonna take a five-minute recess?
Yeah.
We're gonna come back from adjournment? And we already did the, we already did the pledge. And did anybody else, because we had a large group, Walter, can you ask anybody else that would like to, um, talk to the council for public participation? Just in case there was somebody here that didn't get a chance. For public participation?
Yeah, am I able to speak as the executive director, just to thank someone?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Here we go. Here we go.
So Jason O'Connor, executive director of the New Milford Youth Agency. Um, I just really wanna thank John Gallagher of the Bike Express, um, in all his dedication to town New Milford and what he's done for the New Milford Youth Agency. His shop closed October sixteenth and I was away, so I didn't get down there to personally thank him, but I wanted to thank him in front of the town, you know, our town stakeholders. Um, he's been a true asset to our community, and I think many of the children in our community have gotten a bike from John and his business. He's been an asset in the youth agency's Bike Day, which has teamed up with social services, New Milford Rotary, New Milford Ambulance. But John has spent decades helping us out every year, um, with his volunteers refurbishing and fixing bikes. And he's just been an asset to this community. So I really want to thank John and wish him the best. And from all the staff at the agency, um, good luck. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jase.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to suspend the rules to add item-
No, I got, I got a couple of names.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said you weren't any. Oh, so sorry.
Oh. Mike?
What's wrong?
Okay. Uh, Kathy Snobkosty? Andrew Harvey? Come on down.
Okay, I'll take this off. Had the shots and everything, so here we go. Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak here this evening. My name is Andrew Harvey, and I live on Long Mountain Road, and I'm here to voice my disappointment at the handling of the Long Mountain Road Scenic Road Committee thus far, where we are addressing the question of adding painted center lines and a section of guardrail to the scenic road, section of the Long Mountain Road. I'm gonna take a few moments to update you on what's been happen, happening with the Scenic Road Committee so far, research on the center lines on low-volume roads, and why I'm disappointed and concerned with the process so far and recommendations for improvement. For background, the scenic road ordinance is in place to protect specific roads around New Milford that are considered important to the town's rural and aesthetic heritage. These have restrictions in place on changes to the road with the goal of slowing traffic down. The scenic part of Long Mountain Road, I'll use LMR from here on, was repaved a few years ago and had in practice not had a center line for many years. Last year, I received a letter telling residents that LMR was gonna have lines added that week, which was in contravention with the scenic road ordinance. The mayor kindly intervened, the lines were postponed, and a scenic road committee was established, as required under the scenic road ordinance. A proposal to add a section of guardrail has also been added. The DPW and town committee members on the scenic road committee have claimed that center lines make the roads safer. But I and my resident counterpart, Kevin Numay, who was unable to join us this evening, began with the question, are low-traffic volume roads safer with center lines? We discovered a significant body of research demonstrating that center lines on low-volume roads do not improve safety. Key studies include a Federal Highway Administration crash data study covering over fifty-seven billion vehicle miles on rural roads similar to LMR. This study shows no significant difference in accidents on roads after center lines have been added. If anything, there were more when center lines were added. Another study from the journal Accident Analysis and Prevention identifies a significant reduction in the speed of motor vehicles when passing cyclists on roads without center lines compared to roads with center lines. This is critical to LMR because of its scenic nature. We have pedestrians, cyclists, joggers, and horseback riders using the roads continually. The center lines have been demonstrated to encourage vehicles to pass too closely to these vulnerable road users. I also referenced the manual of uniform traffic control devices. This is the U.S. Department of Transport's definitive authority on road markings, which describes in minute detail what, how, and where road markings and signage should be applied. The MUTDC requires center lines where there are greater than six thousand vehicles of average daily traffic, or ADT. It then sets a non-binding guideline for center lines at an ADT of four thousand vehicles. That is, if you have more than four thousand vehicles traveling on a road per day in average, you should probably put in a center line. How many vehicles do you think there are on the busiest part of LMR in a day? According to Jack Healy of the DPW, it's five hundred and twenty-five vehicles a day. That means that LMR has eighty-seven percent less traffic than even the lower guideline level for center lines. The key to this is the term low volume. No one is refuting that lines, particularly edge and center lines, are a benefit to high-volume, high-speed arterial roads. However, it is a demonstrated fact, not an untested theory, that there are more accidents on low-volume rural roads after center lines have been added. Why do center lines create problems on low-traffic roads? Well, it's commonly acknowledged that center lines make speeding worse. As the New Milford Traffic Authority itself acknowledged, in the minutes, you can see in the minutes from a meeting in November the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, and equally commonly acknowledged that speed is the primary safety issue on Long, on Long Mountain Road. And to that, I'd like to just thank Paul Murphy for agreeing to speak to the chief of police about enforcement of this on LMR, which is badly needed. I've also talked about federal guidance. What does the local crash data say? Six-year crash data for the relevant section of LMR where there was in practice no center line shows zero head-on and zero side-swipe collisions, which are the collisions the center line is most relevant to? Zero. The nine crashes during that time had six with single cars leaving the road, likely implying that they were going too fast for the conditions, and three that were miscellaneous, like hitting a deer, and including a front-to-rear, which I have to wonder about, given the low traffic volume on that road. But anyway, that's another thing. So what's the research in favor of lines? None of the town committee members supporting lines, the addition of lines, have provided anything to back up their position with data. This has disappointed and deeply concerned me because this and other behavior of non-resident committee members indicate that they've already made their decision on the question at hand without reference to the significant research to the contrary, and have been stonewalling the residents who disagree with them. For example, we as residents' representatives requested an onsite meeting with the committee to observe and discuss the issues on the actual road. This was arranged-
You're at four and a half minutes.
Okay. Okay, sorry. This was arranged by Jack Healy of the DPW on, for October the thirteenth, with invite, invitation sent to all members of the committee. However, on the day, only Jack, Kevin Numay, and the other, the other residence representative and myself appeared. There was no declining of the invitation or request for another day, just to show, a no-show from all the council and other town committee members. Following this at a committee Zoom meeting on October the twentieth, I expressed my regret at the lack of attendance and requested that we arrange another time for a site visit. This time to discuss the issue with other Long Mountain Road residents who had also requested an audience through us. At this, there was silence on the Zoom meeting. No one even acknowledged the request, and soon the conversation was redirected. Sorry, can I request at this time to extend, or do I need to come back at the end to continue my conversation?
Come back at the end, right?
At the end.
Should I come back at the end? Or continue?
At the end of, at the end of the meeting, sure.
Okay. So at that point, I'll, uh, I'll leave that. I have, I have some further points that I'd like to make, so I'll come back at the end of the meeting and, and continue with my, with my address.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Ness. I live at four eighty Long Mountain Road. Um, am I allowed to give my five minutes to Andrew? Because we've worked together and everything he is saying, I support one hundred percent.
Yes.
And I'm one of those people who walk the road three miles each direction. I live way up on the tipity-top. It's three miles all the way down. I go in both directions. Zero accidents. People give me plenty of room. Everyone is very, very respectful on that road.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mary Ann. And even with that, I think I should be inside the, the second five minutes. Um, further, the chair of the- Further, the chair of the Economic Development Committee, who by all formal accounts is a voting member of the committee, has not participated in a single meeting, and because no notes are produced by the DPW which hosts the committee, he cannot possibly follow the conversation. Additionally, there has been a unilateral addition of a seventh member to the committee where the Scenic Road Ordinance specifies six members. We've not been informed how or why this decision was taken. All of this suggests a general lack of respect for the process set out in the Scenic Road Ordinance. It appears that assumptions about received wisdom are being applied in place of hard data, including assumptions about safety, which quite frankly will put the safety of road users at risk. We, as residents, who have to live with the results of this committee, feel that decisions have already been made and the rest is simply a box-sticking exercise to satisfy a claim-to-do process. This would be hugely disappointing on its own, however, there is a real safety question at stake. So I ask the question, why would we make a proactive change by adding center lines to the road, given the following? One, the status quo in Long Mountain Road is working from a safety perspective with zero head-on crashes or side-swipes, even with the current high-traffic speeds, as shown by the crash data for the town. Two, analysis of Federal Highway Administration data shows no significant difference in accident numbers after center lines are added, with actual numbers showing a slight increase in accidents after center lines are added to rural roads. Three, the U.S. Department of Transportation does not mandate or even recommend the addition of lines to roads like LMR. As a sidebar, I'd like to thank John Oaks for engaging in this discussion and pointing out that the U.S. Department of Transportation manual is soon to be updated to put more emphasis on non-motor vehicle road users, which are so key to the situation in Long Mountain Road. And four, finally, the local residents in majority do not want the addition of lines. There are a handful of residents who would prefer lines, however, the majority do not, as demonstrated by the election of Kevin Numay and myself to represent their views on this committee. I implore the committee to come up to LMR, meet their constituents, and see the real physical issues at hand, and talk to the people who will be most affected by this change. Finally, this is not just an issue for Long Mountain Road. This is an issue that affects all low-traffic-volume roads in New Milford. So I am making a request for a review of policy on line markings on all roads in New Milford with average daily traffic of less than 1,000 vehicles, because right now, the town is wasting taxpayers' money adding center lines to low-volume rural roads that makes these roads more dangerous, as evidenced by billions of miles of road safety research. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Andrew, can I have your comments? Do you mind?
Thank you.
Walter, do we have anyone else?
That's the end of the list here.
Okay. Okay. Kay, next.
Okay. I'd like to suspend the rules to add item 3C, which is a Parks and Rec request.
Second. Any discussion on the Parks and Rec request for adding to the agenda?
Adding to the agenda, right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Okay. Move to approve the consent agenda, items 3, A, B, and C. A is prior minutes, B is the tax clerk report. Item 3C is the Parks and Rec requests permission to accept the donation of a 12-by-12-foot shed from the New Milford Cricket Team. The shed will be installed at Clatter Valley Park to be used to store the cricket equipment. The value of the shed is $5,100. They received approvals from the zoning and inland wetlands departments for the installation. Parks and Rec Commission would like to thank the New Milford Cricket Team for their generosity.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Great. Item number four, move to accept the appointment to the Conservation Commission, Joseph M... and I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name, Karangi, for a term of October 25th, 2021 through January 31st, 2022.
Second.
Thank you. And Joseph is here. Hope you can say hi to everybody.
Hi, everyone. My name is Joe. Currently, I'm a CCSU student, a senior CCSU student, graduated December 2021. So I actually talked to Pete this past week, just my interest in local and state government, so I thought this was the right, you know, pathway, coming here and then talking to Pete about how he can be involved. He told me the boards of commissions that are available. He suggested conservation because it's open, but also that maybe I could, because I generally develop my Microsoft application experience, so, yeah. And so that's why I'm going to be volunteering.
And also because of the timeframe, also said he could contribute time on the housing partnership.
We'll get to that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
I'd also like to move...
Are we going to reappoint in January?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I'd also like to move to add for the housing partnership, Point Joe. Am I saying it right? Karangi? Oh, right. For a term of October 25th, 2021 through January 31st, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you helping out.
Welcome. Also, move for the following reappointment to the Sustainability Fund Committee, Jana Larkin, Walter O'Connor, Katie Francis, Chris Cosgrove, term of 10/25/2021 through April... I'm sorry. April?
March.
No, it's April.
April.
Yep.
May.
Okay, everybody?
May.
April 24th, 2022.
Second.
Thank you, Walter. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Dr. Levin is not here.
So Dr. Levin could not make it. He had to fly overseas, but I'd sent the council his update with any questions. And mayor's comments, Katie, I'll be very brief as we had a lot of public participation. I don't see... Is Lisa here?
No.
See Lisa here? We continue to do our vaccine clinics, and now with the CDC guidance, we're going to be able to provide boosters now for Moderna as well. We do ask those residents, especially in those most vulnerable categories, our seniors, also those that are immune compromised, if you've already received a booster, please... I mean, if you've already received a vaccine, please get a booster. Very important. Can up your ability to fight this virus, especially if you have been vaccinated six months or greater. Also, Lisa wanted me to let the public know that this week's Wednesday's vaccine clinic is full, so the next one, please go to www.nuford.org, click on "Register." It's very important, especially now that we're seeing more people come in to get their boosters, and we're going to be starting to, I believe in the next few weeks, once it's approved, the young...
Yes.
The youngsters, five to 11. So it's going to be very important that you register. It's a faster process. Walk-ins may be difficult as we're operating at maximum capacity. Walter?
Because it was my understanding that Wednesday, you could walk in.
Kind of cut back on that a little bit, Walter, because we have now such an influx, you know, because of the third... Every type of vaccine is now approved for the third. So indeed, we have normally probably 50, 60 on Wednesdays. Now we have 150. We filled every spot. So walk-ins would, you know, slow us down.
What about Saturday?
We don't have any right now. We may. Depends on how it goes for people. What we might do first, I talked to Lisa today, is to, on Wednesday, next Wednesday, extend beyond our 5:30 time. Again, you know, we need to make sure we have the people to give the shots and the volunteers, so.
Mary Jane?
It's very easy to go to CBS. Just walk in, talk, prepare, and just, you know, I got mine Friday.
Okay. Thank you.
Fine, right off.
We'd love to see you, Walter, if you want to.
What age group are they at?
Five and up.
No, I meant for the booster.
Oh, 65? Yeah.
So they haven't gone down more yet? Okay.
Yeah, if you are pre-conditions.
If you do. At your age, you could.
I didn't know where they were with the age yet.
65, anyone under?
Under, I gotta wait.
Unless you have some pre-existing...
I wish. I'm a little closer to 65 than that.
Our vaccination totals, but before, Mary Jane made a very good point. There's also other ways you can get your boosters. You can go to our, whether it be Big Y, Walmart, Walgreens, CBS, you can go there as well. There's opportunities there. Call ahead of time there as well, set up an appointment, but there's other ways as well. So thank you, Mary Jane, for...
You can still find them online.
Yep.
You can get them from your online...
Our vaccine statistics, first doses are over 72%, which is great news, and we'll continue to update the council and the public as we continue to move forward, especially with the youngsters that will be able to get vaccinated. Just real quick, also like to thank Mike and the girls. They won SWCs. Congratulations. Girls, correct?
I actually don't coach.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, you're correct.
You're an influence.
Great job. And New Milford Football won 21-20 against Amity, so great job there. And Bulls just finished up their season, so did a good job there. Congratulations. Field looks unbelievable. Thank you, your apes. And with that, I'm just going to abridge that and let's move on to the next.
Why, thank you, mayor. So we will move down to item number eight, which is an update from the Personnel Director, Greg Bolero. Greg, are you still... There you are.
Good evening, Greg. Good to see you, everybody. So I'm glad to be able to give an update, and Dave, thank you for making that something that you asked for. So for an update, it's the first one I'm giving, so if there's anything that I don't address that the council would like to hear and additional ones, you know, don't hesitate. Please just let me know. I'm happy to address what I can as the Personnel Director. But currently, we have 194 non-seasonal employees. That includes full-time and the permanent part-time staff. Currently, we have two vacancies that we're actively recruiting on, is the comptroller position, as well as the secretary position in Park and Rec. Secretary position, we actually have final interviews scheduled for tomorrow, so we've narrowed that down to two. I expect that to be filled very quickly. Recent hires include, we extended an offer for the Sanitarian today, which was verbally accepted, and so we're expecting a start date for November 8th for that. And we have also filled two critical roles with the wastewater treatment plan. So we continue to be very busy. We're actively recruiting. We also have, for our SROs with the Police Department, we would bring on one more school resource officer or armed school security officer, so if there's anyone looking for a part-time fill-in type of a role, we do still have that vacancy as well. But I am pleased to report, we've got a number of departments that are now fully staffed going into the winter. DPW has a full staff. They're ready to go. They've got snowplow training that's coming up on November 2nd. They're coming here, and it's going to be done, I believe, Mike, that's at Pettibone?
Yes.
Excellent. So happy with that. Training-wise, we continue to push our KERMA e-learning training. We were recognized by KERMA for excellence in risk management, just for the platform that we've provided. And then further, we also have brought KERMA in for onsite training, for tick-borne disease training, as well as defensive driving. So we continue to provide training for all departments, and we leave the departmental-specific training with the department heads. For policy updates, we've continued, and you've been, you know, helpful with our personnel rules and regulations, getting that updated and tweaked. We have continued to revise how we do our policies, so we've done a number of technological advancements. All of the policies are now done online. We've got kind of a paper crisis in personnel, so we're looking to actually eliminate that. But we've done a number of things. We've added Nova Time, which gives our time tracking, gets rid of the paper time cards. We've got MUNA Self-Service, which allows employees to see their pay stubs for up to two years. They can also get their W-2s for the last five years. And then one of the things that I'm really happy about, I want to talk to you a little bit about labor relations. So with our labor relations, we're currently in negotiations with our dispatchers. We've got police coming up next year. But with this police contract, I'm really proud of this. The predecessor contract, it was signed 15 months after the previous one had ended, and it yielded 54 grievances. This contract not only was signed on time, but we've reduced that down to one active grievance that's not even being handled by the union. So really have turned around the employee relations, and I'm really, really happy with the results that we continue to see from that perspective. From that, I just, I really think that there's been a great shift in the way that we've handled personnel and the way that we handle our employee relations. We thrive towards excellence and we provide a platform for training and coaching. I feel really good with where we are. We continue to have a very fast-paced recruitment strategy, and I'm pleased. So with that, I just, I want to see if anybody has any questions, if there's anything that anyone is curious about.
Greg, it appears with the fast filling of those open positions, that people are happy to be coming to work here.
Yes.
That's great.
Yeah. We've got a very good employee base. We've got excellent benefits offered to the full-time employees, and we have very stable positions.
Great. Good work.
Thank you.
Tom?
I just want to make one comment. Greg, thank you for presenting tonight. In the last few years, I have seen a dramatic change in employee... What's the word I'm looking for?
Morale?
Morale. Thank you. It is remarkable to see from DPW, the police, you just go around town, it's a different field. Everybody is friendlier. There's, I don't see folks driving around with a frown on, and it's been remarkable how that change has happened, especially in the more visible departments that we see out on the road as the public. DPW, the police, the folks that you see every day out there. And I see it walking into different offices, you know, whether it's your office, or the clerk, or anywhere else that you go. It's just a different environment, and I know that it's a team effort to do that. It's leadership. It's people that really care, and you listen, and that makes a big difference. And I know the mayor has done that and has changed, I think, the course of the town for the better and obviously for quite a long time. So keep up the great work.
The department heads are doing a fantastic job. They're engaging the employees. They're giving them a platform to speak up. They're, you know, making sure that everybody has the resources that they need, and DPW is a perfect example of that, with the tools being provided and just with the staff being, you know, encouraged to continue to do the great work.
Fantastic job. Thank you.
Dave?
Just a little opening, so I was saying, are they resignations or non-renewals?
So the two vacancies that we have, the comptroller, she just had an outstanding opportunity, and she is going to be the finance director in New Fairfield. So I think the town... And that's one of the things, I look to see if there are any trends in terms of the resignations and how our vacancies are being created.
Yes, they weren't non-renewable.
There, it's not non-renewals. There's really not a trend. So, you know, Olga is going to be the finance director in New Fairfield, and I looked, you know, in the senior center. We had a resignation from one of our elder care advisors earlier this year, who took the senior center director job in Waterbury. So I think the town has done a good job in terms of preparing employees for future things, but I am really proud of the work that they've done while they're here.
Chris, great.
Greg, you know, based on a kind of a crazy and unsubstantiated rumor about people leaving in droves, the employee base not being happy, I emailed you, and, you know, you always, when you're a councilperson, you want to take these sort of things serious because they are serious allegations. And in my anecdotal experience with town employees, I've seen, you know, a pretty happy crew, but let's look at the data. So you sent me the data.
Yep.
I asked you, I think for the last seven or eight years, separation, because I want
I asked you, I think, for the last seven or eight years, separation, because I wanted to look, you know, over a number of years, and tell me if my interpretation of the data is incorrect. If we take two thousand and, I think, twenty out of the mix, because there were a lot of separation because of COVID.
Library reconstruction, things of that nature.
Yes. I think the people, the average number of people leaving per year under Mayor Bass is less than it was under a previous administration.
Actually, from that data, it's correct. In two thousand and fifteen, there was twenty-four. Two thousand and sixteen, there was twenty. Two thousand and seventeen, there was a total of twenty-eight. And then, just when you have a change in leadership, it's not uncommon to see that change.
Right.
But for two thousand and eighteen, it was only nineteen total separations. So, take two thousand and twenty, with the library, you know, reconstruction and the layoffs of the part-time people, it did increase to thirty-four. But, you know, right now, we're still right within the average with twenty-two total separations this calendar year.
Yeah. And for the record, when people are vested in pension, there's, it's, you can't take their pension away from them.
No, we can never take it. If you vested for your pension, it would take an act of court to take something like that away. So, it's not something we do.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Greg?
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, everybody.
Great job.
Thank you.
Item number nine, we have an update from our IT Director, Dave Watson.
Good evening, Council. Thank you very much. Are you, Mike, you ready for us, sir?
Uh, I can't, yeah.
Okay. So, and actually, let me.
Be a little ironic to have technical problems right now.
Yeah, right. So, this might have been called in some feedbacks from relocating. This would be a very sizable wireless access point, and I was going to save this towards the end, but the individuals with the organization that we're going to be speaking to in just a moment have been very patient with us, so I want to move them ahead. Our intention is to work with Charter Communication to stand up free access Wi-Fi on the town green, down the length of Bank Street, as well as a large portion of Railroad Street as well. It would simply be there for the public to have access to. Likely will be available pretty much in the entirety of the sidewalk, up and down the length of the green. Likely will not, for a number of reasons, permeate too deep into the businesses. We don't want to interrupt their own networks and what have you. But it is something that I think will be bringing great value to our residents. And actually, for me, this is a nice value add, because this is the first time that the town employees themselves are not my only customer. For once, I actually do something that's facing the municipality directly, which is a nice change of pace. Not that I don't love my customers, but it is a nice value add to be able to do something directly impact in the community. And if Mike is ready for us, we actually have some individuals with Charter Communication who are.
Audio or video, both?
Both, please, if you can do that, Mike.
Who are kind enough to join us. They're actually coming, obviously remotely, because they are about six hours away over in a part of New York that I'm not entirely familiar with, but not exactly commute distance for us. So, Caleb, are you here with us?
Give me a second, I have.
And while, and while he's waiting, just for the council and the public that's watching before, is during COVID, we saw a great number of people that have now used the mechanism of technology to really communicate. Our students that did remote learning, hybrid learning, those residents that now their new way of life is working either partially remotely at home, or fully at home, and the ability for those in need to access the internet. So, we've had people that have parked in our town hall parking lot to access internet because of the cost. So, especially during these times, we can definitely help those in need by giving free Wi-Fi along the town, lighting it up, lighting it up, lighting it up the green.
Can we just spend an hour and a half learning about how it's nice to live close to it?
We did. Absolutely.
You've got choices in.
So, so I met with Dave, and, you know, asked Dave, what can we do? How can we do it? How can we make it so that the green can be lit up for our residents and those that visit our town to use? That puts us on the same playing field as some of the bigger cities that do that. It also will help as an economic driver to our town as well. So, we partnered with Charter Communications. And Dave, I'm going to segue it back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Caleb, are you with us, sir?
Hold on, Dave. I have Jonathan Hoppers, and I have, can you read the list of attendees, right?
I see people.
I see Isaiah Thomas, Jennifer Young.
You got someone on mute there. Is that Jonathan?
Yeah, and I can't have the lights and the TV on, so.
I'll stop talking.
All right.
Pete, can I ask him a couple of questions while we?
Absolutely.
Dave, so how many of these would we need?
Ten.
Ten of them?
Yes.
And would have the ability, I know there was a resident, a few meetings ago, was talking about Christmas music and stuff. Would we have the ability to put speakers up and go through that to play music or put out a public announcement?
So, this would not directly, it's wireless access, so it's not directly a speaker, obviously. I don't think you perceive it to be that, but it's not, it's not an audio system, but Charter will be standing up a leg of that system that would be specifically for municipal use. So, should we choose to do something that's driven over a network to that effect? Absolutely. You know, there's a, there's a lot of options there, once you have the network out there. You can do digital signboards, you could, sky's kind of the limit, once you have the network out there as far as what you could use it for. To start, you know, kid's got to do some homework, and he sits out in the green, maybe up at the bandstand to do his homework, as opposed to inside our, what's otherwise going to be a nice beautiful library. He's outside, he's getting some fresh air. And, you know, while he could certainly go up to the reservoir and disconnect, sometimes there is some advantage to that. You know, I know that there's other places we've been looking to add such services, and I think the green is a wonderful place to start.
That would give the ability, if you had a wireless speaker, to use that Wi-Fi to create?
Conceivably.
Right.
Precisely, yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Are they ready?
I believe we're having some further technical difficulties, but.
While we're doing technical difficulties, can you also update the council?
On some of the other items?
What else we've been doing here?
I'd be happy to, and I'll try to keep it brief. It's been quite the year. I'd like to start by reminding everyone, because I sometimes find this surprising myself, we're still just a two-person team. And while that's not necessarily a bad thing, I do just want to highlight what a monumental task we've managed to mount off. I'm frankly, I'm very proud of what Ken and I have done for the last year. So, to start, we actually have a brand-new server environment. Initially, we had about twelve or so servers that all had their own individual role, and each and every one of those was their own figurative all-your-eggs-in-one's basket. So, example, the Police Department ran all of their CAD environment, all of the computers inside of the cars, the computers inside of dispatch, they all connect to a centralized program, and it was all run off of one server. If that server goes down, all of those other ancillary services are also down. What we have now is actually two servers in their place that run side-by-side, and if one of them fails to work for a time being, the other one is able to take the entirety of the load, and there is no interruption in service. Previously, we would have had to wait for equipment to be shipped to us, we would have had to install it, we would have had to restore it from backups, then install all the applications. It would have been likely days of downtime versus hours and/or minutes, and in some instances, we've actually brought down a server, and not a single soul in town even knew what was happening, because the other one was there. We also have now secured our onsite backups. So, an intermittent solution that we had was backing up all of our servers to the cloud, but that wasn't the whole picture. So, now what we have is a secured onsite backup solution that's also hardened to ransomware attacks. Forgive me for not going into details, but, you know, keep some things under wraps. In addition to that, we're also taking those backups and putting them off-site, so all of the town data, from the PD down to what's done in the Health Department and Public Works, it's all actually off-site as well. So, if something were to happen, we have that to fall back on. We've also implemented a brand-new and modern phone system. So, the old system, while it was doing the job to an extent, some of the things that it didn't facilitate, which came to light during COVID, were the ability to communicate when you're remote, or just simply out of the office. So, now, if you so choose, there is both a mobile app for our phone system that can be installed on town employees' phones, as well as on their laptops. So, be it COVID, be it someone is sick and able to work, just not able to make it to the office, or someone's job takes them out of the office frequently, they can still be accessed, and you dial their extension, and you reach them. It's as simple as that. We also went through and upgraded all of the network switches in town. The best way to describe this is essentially all of the major intersections. So, the network comes into the building, and then it branches out to every single computer and phone and everything within the building. There's twenty-three of those within nine locations throughout the municipality. They were all disparate manufacturers, different hardware. A lot of them were becoming end-of-life, and they were just general, they weren't terribly secure. So, now, what we've done is implemented new switches that actually proactively inform us if there's any issues, whether the power supply is failing and needs to be replaced, if one of the switches stops communicating. We get notified and hopefully find out before the staff even knows and can jump in and resolve the issue. As I mentioned before, with the CAD environment at the PD, we actually recently, or we're just wrapping up, actually worked with the Police Department to implement NextGen, which is helping to modernize the PD. So, previously, they were working with a system that was about twenty-five years old, was starting to show its age. And with NextGen, what the PD is most looking forward to is the ability to digitize a lot of their practices, including, as an example, from speaking to the chief today, the ability to do ticketing via electronic means. So, the ticket is no longer literal paper, that is then processed, mailed, or hand-delivered up to the court system. It's a complete electronic process, up to and including actually printing the ticket. Also, at the PD, they have a very new audio recording system. Their previous audio recording system, which is responsible for recording non-emergency calls, as well as 911 and radio traffic, was end-of-life, end-of-service, just in general, very much needed to be replaced. The new system that's been implemented gives them greater visibility into who the calling party is, gives them much better ability to work with the audio that they have, and also expands their capacity to record additional information, and also streamlines their ability to share those recordings within the PD. As I'm sure many of you are not aware, this month is actually Cyber Security Month. It is a terribly underlooked holiday. But with that being said, we take it relatively seriously. When I first started with the organization, our phishing vulnerability, which essentially means if someone sends you an email trying to entice you to do something that you shouldn't be doing, the individuals who fell for that, when we first started that, it was five-point-two percent of our employee base. Last time I spoke to council, we were doing much better, but we still weren't where we needed to be. This last month, we were actually, just to set the ground for this, the industry standard for municipal government of our size is three-point-seven percent. Last month, we were at zero-point-six, which I think speaks volumes to both our staff, not just tolerating the phishing emails that I send them on a weekly basis or bi-weekly basis, but they're also learning from it, and they're growing from it. We are also doing two additional efforts during the course of this month, as far as engaging our employee and learning where they are. We are doing an assessment, which helps us to understand where they are when it comes to cybersecurity. Also doing a culture survey, which helps us to understand what their perspective is when it comes to cybersecurity, how they fit into the organization as far as protecting the municipality when it comes to cybersecurity. And those two efforts will help my department make more informed decisions when it comes to things like training, or where we need to be hardening things down. We've also started sending out a scam-of-the-week email, which essentially, it looks to see what is prevalent in the, in the world of people being scammed, more or less via email, and it communicates to them new perspectives and new vectors of attack that they should be aware of. One of the most recent ones that came out was one that appeared to be coming from Verizon, telling you to click this link to get your voicemail, where in fact, it was a fake website that appeared to be Verizon. You would try to log in with your Verizon credentials, and your account would have been mitigated. We've also been working very closely with the library staff when it comes to their builds and their implementation of technology, as well as their phone system over there. I am hoping that we are very close to being set up here, because I am at the point where I'm going to have to start vamping. I will vamp for one more second.
Just want to make one quick comment.
Yes, thank you.
I remember when you brought this idea up of access points and Wi-Fi, economic development a little over ten years ago, and it was about getting access to businesses up and down the green. Because at the time, the cloud confused a lot of folks, especially in this room, way back when. You didn't know where this cloud was. And access points were also a foreign subject. We were paying a lot for data in those days. So, I remember the mayor specifically during economic development, almost a decade ago, bring up the necessity for this. So, I'm very glad you're moving this forward finally.
I, I might be in my own realm here, but I find it very exciting. I was born and raised in this town, and never did I think that I would be having a hand in getting something like this stood up. And I'm very anxious to see what comes of this, and what we find the community using it for.
And while we're still waiting for Mike, I know, Sal, your business is actually cybersecurity. So, how important is cybersecurity to either businesses or to municipality like this?
So, I work with the cyber defense. I can talk for hours, so this is not a problem. I hear very good things.
Well, start your clock.
I know, we have a watch, five to midnight, something like that. So, I hear very good stuff. I hear a disaster recover with the tapes. If there was no disaster recovery back in the days, before Mayor Bass, basically, when the systems are going down, all the records are going down. So, in case of ransom, which is down the water, it's over. Now, I have a disaster recover, which is a lifesaver. I hear also the penetration testing, the email phishing, all that stuff. Those are the methods that we use to find out how many people fall for the tracks of, or traps of the, of the security frauds and stuff like this. So, and I hear encryption. For the time being, these are the, one of the best methods that you can use to secure the town's data, the network, and all the records that we hear. This is great stuff. I appreciate the help.
Thanks, Sal.
You ready on?
Mike?
All right.
Okay. Gentlemen, Inspector? If you could give the council and those that are watching and in the audience, if, kind of a walkthrough, if you're a resident or somebody coming to New Milford, and now you're on the green, and you want to use Wi-Fi, will you be able to do that once this is up and running? What would they experience?
Absolutely.
As residents revisit, they would typically, they would be reconnected, although their phone, you would still have to accept those terms and conditions, you know, as you, as you return. But otherwise, it should be a pretty seamless transition, and would offload some folks' data. And as you mentioned, Mayor Bass, you know, people would be able to use that at their leisure, especially if you have folks in the, in the town parking lot. I'm sure that can be a bit of a headache, but there's certainly other opportunities for folks as well to be able to be creative and use that connection to whatever ends they meet within, obviously, certain, certain areas. But, again, it would be a relatively seamless transition. It would be exciting, especially as you guys host events. People would be able to share things on social media pretty quickly, and they would be connected. They wouldn't have to use their own personal. They wouldn't have to use their own personal data. So all these things obviously contribute to, obviously, a fantastic town that you guys have there, and hopefully, we'll be able to continue to grow with you guys as a town.
Does anybody on the council have questions? Chris?
A few questions. How are we going to monitor or enforce that people are following the terms and conditions? There's not nefarious things going on through our network?
So this is a managed service, so anything that would be flagged as, you know, undesirable, if you will, they would be immediately kicked off. We would obviously have their IP and MAC information. So if it got to the point of having to have, you know, anyone else involved, you would be able to reach out to the managed service team, the managed Wi-Fi team specifically, and you'd be able to get some of that data from there. You guys will also have a network health page, a portal page. So most likely, David would be the one most likely monitoring that, but you would have access to a portal page in which you can monitor the network, the health of the network, along with a few other data points as well.
Up north on Railroad Street, are we going?
So the proof will be in the pudding, really, once it's deployed there. But right now, where the final access point will be as far as that distance of the stretch, it'll make it from the light down to the vicinity of, forgive me, I'm going to forget the name of the business, Tonic.
Taylor?
Skin and Tonic.
Skin and Tonic.
Oh, okay.
Perhaps past there, it's really going to be a bit more, we've done some testing down in that area, and we've been able to ascertain that from that area towards the light should have solid coverage. But the testing equipment is actually not as powerful as the device in front of you. And it's also not been installed in its final and absolute location, so there's some variability there. But as currently planned, pretty much from the light at the major intersection back towards that business.
I know some of those businesses north of there feel sometimes still a little left out. What's the cost of this?
So...
Equipment to set up and then ongoing?
Yep, so the initial cost of the deployment is actually still being solidified. It looks like the ongoing month-to-month cost, I believe, has landed in around $700. I can get you some more solid numbers once I have them. But what happens is, they give us some initial ballpark information, they come out here, which they've done, they scout out the locations for the access points, they define exactly where it's going to go, what build needs to occur, what digging needs to occur to achieve that. And I believe Caleb is going to be getting back to me with that information in the near future.
Great, thank you. It's exciting.
Some of this 5G, correct? Should be 5G?
2.4 and 5 gigahertz, which is different than 5G in term. 5G is a cellular data network. So there's 2.4 gigahertz, which is what your Wi-Fi used to be. Generally speaking, you get slower speeds, but it penetrates through walls and things better. 5 gigahertz is a much wider pipe, it's like a highway versus a dirt road, but it doesn't have that same penetration. So depending on where you are from the access point and what's between you, you might use one of those two networks, but both will be available.
So just like...
5G's phone, 5G's computer.
And that's 5 gigahertz versus 5G.
So just like in your home, would we be leasing these, renting these, and they would maintain them?
Correct. So it is a managed Wi-Fi, yep. So we are paying for the internet to be serviced to us and ISP, and we are essentially paying for the privilege to use the devices and for them to be managed on our behalf by Spectrum.
Good.
Any other questions for Dave?
I have a question. So the bandwidth will be about 200 megabits per second per access point, is that true?
I believe the full bandwidth of the implementation is coming in on a 400-meg pipe. And I don't know, we've discussed specifics as far as, you know, per node or per device limitations.
Understood.
And it's not symmetric, I don't believe. Caleb, can you speak to the specifics on that, sir?
Yeah, it is not symmetric. This is being supported with a DOCSIS network.
You want me to tell him to repeat? Yeah, Caleb, can you repeat that again? The gentleman's question is, as far as what the bandwidth is going to be for the overall network, as well as per device?
Yeah, so it should be 400 by 20. Typically, we do like a 10 by 5 for each device, but as we get closer and closer to the actual install and scope of work, these are things that'll be outlined, working with David, obviously, and Mayor Bass to nail down those very specifics. But the DOCSIS modems themselves serviced at 400 by 20, and then obviously, the town has a few separate options as far as the actual bandwidth per device.
Does this speak to your question, sir?
Yes, it did. So all of us in the room, we can watch Netflix.
All right.
And we're not going to see any difference in the delay. That's pretty much what it is. It's great stuff.
Mike?
Yeah, just curious, as far as security, like if I'm on this, if I'm on the Wi-Fi, is it even banking something I shouldn't do? Or is it secure?
So, that's a good question. I would say as a generalization, and separate from this network, whenever you're accessing something outside of your home network, make sure that the wireless access point that you're connecting to requires a password, because otherwise, the content that you're transmitting is not going to be encrypted. So if you go into a business with free Wi-Fi and there's no password, don't use it for anything that you wouldn't want someone over your shoulder looking at. This one is going to, I believe, have a level of authentication. With that being said, whenever you're doing something to that effect, you also want to look at the URL relative page you're going to. You want it to say HTTPS. The S there is important, that's also encrypting your traffic. I would say as a generalization, if you have the option to do banking outside of a public area, that would probably be the best answer. Of course.
Any other questions for Dave? Dave, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb.
Thank you, Caleb.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you guys for inviting us. Have a great evening.
Yes.
Hard work along the years.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Item 10, Mayor, would you like me to make the motion?
Yes, please.
I would like to move to accept, the town council to accept the Board of Education request to move $11,000... Pardon?
To, yeah, 11,975.
Yeah, 11,975.
Board of Education or Board of Finance?
Board of Finance.
You're requesting the town council and the Board of Finance to remove, this is from the Board of Ed, asking, Dave, $11,975. This is to remove it from the Capital Reserve account to fund the New Milford High School alarm system upgrade. That's 10A.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? This is out of their Capital Reserve, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Item 10B.
Do you have a question on that?
Yep.
In the Capital Reserve for the...
I can get that for you, Dave.
Ballpark figure?
Uh...
Two, 300? Four?
I would think it would be around there.
Yeah.
And then they have their other surplus funds that would be on top of there.
Right. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Also like to move that the town council and the Board of Finance accept the deposit of $6,250 into the Capital Reserve account, the Board of Finance, as a result of an ever-source rebate associated with Munis Capital Project 000500, which is for the Sarah Noble Intermediate School rooftop cooling unit number one, replacement that was funded via the Capital Reserve account during 2020, 2021 fiscal year.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
And item C, I'm sorry, item D. Do I have a B?
C.
Right, item C, sorry. Move that we set a special town meeting for November the 8th, 2021, at 6:30 PM for round number one of Ameriku Rescue Plan funding.
And those were the ones that were approved by town council and Board of Finance. Second. Any discussion?
Does it include anything done this evening?
No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Wait a minute, Dave, you mean what we voted on was coming here?
Well, first of all, what we voted on earlier, oh, we already did that.
We already voted on that.
Yeah, we already did that.
Okay, what we're doing here.
What we're doing here would be the next tran...
Next round two.
Okay. Anybody else? And vote?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Pleasure. Thank you.
And item D, move to appoint the following people to a temporary non-bargaining unit compensation and benefit subcommittee as follows. David Lawson, Chris Cosgrove, Katie Francis, Walter Bayer, Thomas Pillar. Term to be October 25th, 2021 through April 24th. Got me thinking last time, 2022.
Motion is second. Any discussion on the motion, Dave?
I'll be abstaining from the vote.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Do you have any microspecs that you...
They can choose not to abstain.
Right. I vote for myself all the time. I'm my own best advocate, Mike. Item number 11, ARPA funds, discussion and possible action on the distribution of items A through C, I'm sorry, A through E. You can see my eyes are tired.
Okay.
And we will do those independently, correct?
Thank you, Caleb.
Okay.
So first, this is stuff that we've been talking about for several meetings, but we have people here too, is the youth agency, and that shouldn't be youth counselors, it should be the mental health clinic that we talked about before. Jason is here. We have any questions? This is a two-year trial. And Jason, could you just give a real quick brief overview? I know they've had the deck for several meetings.
Correct.
But just so the public could hear this as well, and the council.
And may I ask, Jason, just define that. It's our, it says here, youth agency, youth counselors. Would you give me the proper term for the record?
Sure. So again, I'm Jason O'Connor, I'm the director of the New Milford Youth Agency. And youth agency, it would be social workers or the clinical counselors.
Social workers or clinical counselors?
Yeah, currently, so currently, we have a social worker maintained on staff, and the ARPA funding would help to increase that position from 30 hours to 40 hours with the increase of need for clinical services that we needed. So that position is a social worker on paper. And then the possibility over the next two years, if we do have the demand and the need to bring on a clinical supervisor, and that would be an LCSW that could be on our staff in a clinical capacity.
And Jason, this is, you and I talked, also, we spoke with the guidance counselors and social workers in the school. This is basically to really address head-on the real, the isolation and teen depression that you've seen, we've all seen, when it came to remote learning and COVID. So we were trying to partner with the board as well, to kind of give a more holistic approach to addressing the issue.
Yeah, so essentially, I just do, everyone has seen the data and the stats. You know, in 2019, suicide was the second-leading cause of death for children aged 10 to 24. 13.5 in 2017, and then 12.7 of CT students seriously considered attempting suicide, with 6.7 attempting suicide. Locally, seven schools in our region, 12th graders had 25.5% of the average number of youth who felt sad or depressed. So this was pre-COVID, and so with COVID, came increased isolation, came increased anxiety, demands, expectations, and just a whole new world of unknown. And within those populations, we also have to understand that the subpopulations of LGBTQI, minority populations, and children of color, they then suffer even more. One quick stat is LGBTQI youth are more than twice as likely to feel suicidal, and over four times as likely to attempt suicide compared to heterosexual youth. Children of color had higher rates of mental illness, but were less likely to receive that care due to systemic issues. So that was what we were looking at prior to the pandemic. Essentially, nearly one in five children have the mental health, have a mental health, emotional, or behavioral disorder, yet of those children, only 20% are able to access that, and that's dependent on cost, lack of transportation, insurance coverage, you know. So what the Mayor Bass and I were working on is how can the town help alleviate this? There's a lot of great clinical opportunities within the town itself, different providers. So how can the town step in and help alleviate those wait lists, help provide a no-cost option? Because that's currently what we are. We are a no-cost option. We do not charge for our service. We're operating since our opening in, I believe it was June 28th or 26th. We have 10 students currently on, and that is operating with our 30-hour social worker, who her primary position is a programmer. So that's the need to increase that, to maintain the, or to take on clinical hours, as well as a licensed professional counselor intern that I was able to get through Fairfield University. And essentially, this is just allowing us to, because we don't know, well, we see it. We see it with the school, but we don't know what will happen a year from now, two years from now, the true detrimental effects of COVID. And within the ARPA funding, it does clearly outline opportunities to increase clinical services to target the negative effects of COVID-19 on community youth and their mental health. Its funding is needed for regular clinical services due to the increased stresses brought on by the pandemic. So the mayor and I have worked with the schools, worked with our community providers, to see how we can, the town, help the community. And right now, it's a no-cost option. This proposed model does build in the fact that if all of a sudden, we do have the huge need, we can bring on a clinical supervisor. And then that position will also help build out the opportunity to collect revenue through insurance billing and bring on a billing specialist at a contractual level. So that is an opportunity that these monies can be used for. But that's essentially it. So if there's any questions on, I guess, trends, things like that, or the proposed model, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions? Chris?
Using the talent that you're looking to bring on to help the kids, how readily available is that?
It's, they're very much in depend, sorry, in demand. You know, if we were to bring on an LCSW, that's a position that I think he left Greg. Greg would, and I would be really working hard to get a really good person, because they're very much in demand. Because everywhere you've seen mental health, the stigma has decreased, more people are openly willing to target their mental health, adults included. And so those positions, such as a licensed clinical social worker, a licensed master social worker, licensed professional counselor, they're all very much in high demand. So for a position that works for the municipality, I think we would have a great opportunity to bring on someone, because it's a wonderful place to work, we have a great benefits package and all that. But yeah, it's a position that I do think it would be in high demand, and we could find a qualified candidate, if we got to that position and we did need it. Because right now, we are operating at a level where we have a contractual supervisor operating as an LCSW to provide the clinical supervision for our program, and that's needed. Because without that clinical supervision, we wouldn't be able to operate. So right now, the need is just on a contractual level. But yeah, as everyone has seen it, the pandemic has exacerbated the need of self-care, mental wellness, prioritizing it, and really taking care of oneself, and this is a great way to do it.
So if you get the talent and there is a need, what sort of metrics are you tracking to make sure that the services we're rendering are effective?
You could look at essentially discharges. You know, how long that student is in our care. You know, depression, as an example, is curable. So is your client, are they getting better? You know, the expectation is...
And you can tell they're getting better if, once...
Symptoms, everything else.
Once they say, you no longer need our services anymore.
Correct. You know, within either the social worker, or if it's the clinical supervisor, as any other medical profession, I like to give the example, is if your arm's broken, you go to the doctor and you get a cast, and you rehabilitate your arm. The same thing can be said to the mind. So your mind will eventually heal, and once you start practicing, you know, positive self-care, resiliency, and putting in either behaviors or actions to increase your mental wellness, your symptoms will begin to alleviate. If you're depressed, maybe you're sleeping better, maybe you're eating better, you know, you're enjoying things that, once you dropped out of, and those are things the clinician can see. So those are all measurable in that sense. So you would probably most likely look at the discharge, or I guess the best metric would be, you're not needed anymore, and you don't have an influx of students coming to you and saying, hey...
The trouble is that a lot of that is subjective, right? So in the case of a broken arm, I can have an X-ray and say, your arm isn't broken anymore.
Correct. But you can also look at and say, hey, you know, my child dropped out of archery, but in the last, you know, 12 weeks, he's since joined archery and took on swimming, and is excelling in school. And so those are qualitative, you know, like you said, they're contextual. There is no, sure, sure, there's mechanisms you can put in place, and you could do daily mental health checkups with that student, so on a scale, and I've done this. on a 1 to 10, you show kids emojis technically, or smiley faces, and you rate it. If for the first four weeks you're seeing them, they're all sad faces, but then they start to trend into that happy face, that's an easy metric that you can use for younger students. So that, yeah, I guess, and then, you know, it would just be the client population and overall need that we would be serving.
Okay. Right, thank you.
Any other questions for Jason?
Jay?
Katie?
Jason, thanks very much for working on this to make it happen. Because whatever intervention you have is better than what they would have had without it.
I agree. And I think it's just-
And you're doing a great job with it.
Thank you, Katie. And I think it's just another opportunity to show that the town, New Milford, you know, New Milford Youth Services and the adults, we value our youth and we take care of our youth. It's just another way the town can provide a service. And thank you all much, or thank you all for having me tonight.
Any other questions for Jason? Jason, real quick, I'd also like to have the council and the public, congratulations on being newly married.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, so today, today was a whirlwind. It was my first day back. And I came back to, I think, 180 emails after overtime. So, and every time you'd email, you'd get a response back. So it was, it was a whirlwind day. But I married the girl of my dreams, love her, and so glad to be here. I doubt she's watching, but.
Mics are now will give you the link to the video.
Next is-
Are we going to vote on the intent?
Nope, not yet.
Oh, okay.
Next is childcare assistance. And for those, I know Katie could opine on this.
I could.
We have, Jason could as well, because we do have the childcare before and after. We also during the pandemic had, when the schools were shut down, we also had our temporary all-day care as well. One of the things that we saw from a lot of our residents and constituents is sometimes when their jobs changed, they either were let go or their hours were cut, they needed to pivot themselves as a family, either get reeducated or find a new job. And sometimes, if it was a dual-income household, that second person would have to take the shift of the purse of the childcare, and may not have been able to do it because of the cost of childcare. So one of the things I'm proposing is a use of ARPA funds, is childcare assistance for those in need to help them within this next two years. If they do need it to help with childcare funding, this money would go directly to the childcare provider. I think this would be a wonderful benefit to help those on the economic ladder move up a little bit farther.
Look, it's working super, but there's no question about that. How many clients are we targeting?
I would- Katie?
I don't think you can really put a number on it, Dave, because the, what we, in the youth agency, for instance, during the pandemic with all the different school schedules, it's more of a number of hours that you can offer. Because some people need a couple of hours, maybe when they switch day who works day, who works at night, to those who might have three children and they can't afford that third one to go to the other daycare. So, and that would be, I think, very hard to isolate that. Jason might have a better handle-
Let's look at it differently.
I just, let me, I ask you a question, Dave. Is it too much money? And you don't think there'll be enough, or?
I, I think it should be much higher, but let's, so it's by the hour. See, that's not what's clear. It just says-
Well, that's what was done-
Well, no, that's fine.
Yeah, I think that many daycare centers have minimums, as an example. But for instance, we now have our first home daycare that was licensed and will now be working, that was done through the United Way. It's a program that we have. So someone like that, or something with the youth agency did, they're allowed to not have to fit into the constraints of a, you know, a for-profit daycare. They have to do that. So it could be somebody who needs two, you know.
So it could be one hour, it could be two hours, it could be 10 hours, it could be zero a week, 10 the next week. So it's by the hour.
And in a lot of these situations, as with the youth agency did, the parent does pay something. You know, it's the matter of having some, some input on it, and it helps. Right, Jason, am I missing anything there?
I would say, when, again, the pandemic, you know, this was a big issue that we found with parents, is that, exactly, and-
I was just wondering how it's being spent.
And it was-
By the hour.
Yeah. And we would work with social services, actually, to do the means testing. So then they would, we would send them to social services, communicate with us. And then that way, it was a means tested, and then we would allow it.
That's all I ask.
Thank you. Chris?
And the funds go right to the childcare center?
Correct.
Yeah, got it. Thank you.
Any other question? Next, we're going to go to the Milford Senior Center Advisory Board, 75,137.75. And Jasmine is here. And one of the things that, Katie, I would like to kind of break it out. The senior center advisor, citizens advisory board, we spoke, Jasmine spoke with Joy, the president, and myself. And because they're a nonprofit, and the way they want to work this out is they would like this money to really be broken out in two tranches. So the first tranche is 19,335.65. That was for invoices for the lunches. The rest of that funding would go into a new account. It would be similar to the Hope Fund that social services does. So if you have seniors that need refrigerators broken, or, right, Jasmine? Or a car payment that maybe due that they can't afford, it would be the same thing as the Hope Fund, but it would just be to the seniors.
And the advisory board would-
Would oversee that.
Would see that and assess it. Right, Jasmine?
I guess we all were content with each other.
Right. So 19,335.65, don't forget that, or for the-
It would be the 75, 137.75, but the-
Right.
But 19,335 would be earmarked before the senior center advisory board account itself.
Right.
Because they wanted to make sure that was that way.
Yes, right. Okay, got it.
Any questions for Jasmine? Chris?
Not a question, but just an amazing job our senior center did through this pandemic. The most vulnerable population to COVID, they didn't miss a beat. And I saw, you know, whereas seniors would come in for lunches typically, they couldn't do that anymore. They're packing them in coolers every day, and taking them out and delivering them to seniors. So-
You're still doing that.
And you're still doing that.
We actually have a hybrid going on. We have partial that are being delivered. We also have the opportunity for those to dine in-house if they feel so comfortable, or if people still want that in between. They do have a pickup option. So our culinary school has been so gracious for allowing this, you know, three-option hybrid, really, to be able to, you know, appease to the comfort of our seniors.
And the partnership with the culinary school is just immeasurable. So thank you for everything you and your staff do.
I think Jasmine can testify. One of the things that I think is truly a very joyful thing is now watching the seniors come back to have their lunches, then their movie after the lunch, and in the dining room there, in that area. So Jasmine, thank you to you and your team. And you're doing these, all these expanded programs. And I really love the thought that you had for this, is you are expanding the senior center, not just walls in, but outside, with all these other events that you're having them do outside of the senior center.
Watching.
So I think it's great. I think it's great. I got my butt kicked in that game. Any, any other questions for Jasmine? Next, Katie?
The Brownfield Grant, which is part of the Connecticut Community Challenge Grant Match. That's $500,000.
Mayor from?
Good evening, town council. For the record, my name is Leva Furman, 60 Colonial Ridge, Gaylordsville. And I am the chairman of the New Milford Riverfront Revitalization Committee. And I'm here tonight to speak to the allocation of a half a million dollars to be used as a match for the Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant Program, the purpose of which is to improve the livability, vibrancy, convenience, and appeal of communities throughout the state. The grant guidelines say that successful projects will likely include multiples of the below elements. Transit-oriented development that defines, that densifies commercial or residential land uses near transit hubs, like our railroad station. Downtown major hub development that improves or reuses existing properties like brownfields and remediation. Essential infrastructure that facilitates future development, like the realignment of Youngsfield Road. Housing to support affordability, accessibility, and local workforce, like some of the housing we proposed for the riverfront. Mobility improvements that increase connectivity to transit and promote economic activity, including pedestrian ADA and bicycle improvements, like we talked about with Riverfront. Public space improvements that provide amenities to the community, including open space, public art projects, wayfinding, lighting, and safety improvements. Like we talk about the Riverfront. Say it. Okay. This grant is a perfect fit for Riverfront Revitalization. The state will be giving out grants from $1 million to $10 million. The minimum match requirement is 50%. This $500,000 would allow us to have a project, our 500, the state's $1 million, $1.5 million. Very easy math. As you know, ARPA provides substantial infusion of resources to help rebuild stronger and more equitable economies. The state was directed to ensure that the recovery efforts were oriented towards transformative initiatives. Words sound familiar? Transformative initiative? That would enable Connecticut and New Milford to emerge from the pandemic stronger, healthier, and ready to resume the progress that has made it a leader and a desirable place to live. So for ARPA, key areas for investment include investing in our future, that's the riverfront, creating a more affordable New Milford with new housing, economic growth that works for all with new businesses and establishments. An example taken from ARPA guidelines includes investments in parks, public plazas, and other public outdoor recreation spaces responsive to the need of disproportionately impacted communities by promoting healthier living environments and outdoor recreation and socialization to mitigate the spread of COVID. The interim rules issued by the Treasury Department include eligible uses that support affordable housing and stronger neighborhoods in impacted communities. And as you all know, the Riverfront Zone lies in an economically challenged census tract here in New Milford. Guidelines state that Treasury encourages recipients to consider green infrastructure investments and projects to improve resilience to the effort, effects of climate change. One of the four themes on which the Riverfront Project is based is resiliency. Green infrastructure projects that support stormwater system resiliency could include rain gardens that provide water storage and filtration benefits, green streets, and other projects that filter water from impervious surfaces. This would be the reconfiguration and redoing of the Youngsfield. The combination of the Connecticut Community Challenge Fund and the ARPA monies would allow New Milford to move ahead from a conceptual plan to a more definitive plan in preliminary design and construction. And a key portion of this project will call for and allow for citizen input and suggestions to the overall and numerous subprojects that make up the plan. The application for Connecticut Community Challenges Grant Program requires town council approval, so we would be back here to get the town council's approval before we submit the grant. So you'll know exactly what we're submitting for. There are two rounds of funding. The first requires a letter of intent due in December with the application due in January. They have not yet announced the schedule for the round two funding. On behalf of the Riverfront Revitalization Committee, I wholeheartedly endorse the mayor's proposal to allocate half a million dollars for ARPA funds to this effort. The availability and confluence of these funds is really a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that this town does not want to miss.
Thank you, mayor. Katie?
Leva, it's a matching grant, and so ARPA would fund $500,000. But then you said that you said-
This would match what we're asking, the million dollars we're asking the state for.
Oh, it doesn't really match. That's where you threw in with the 1.5.
Well, that's the match. It's a 50% match.
Oh, 50%. I didn't hear that. Okay. Thank you. That's great.
Jack, just for the edification of the council and the public as well, this would be something that would be fitting into our plan as we are moving DPW from where it is currently to Century Brass.
So it's sort of twofold, kind of?
Well, it's all going to be working in tandem. You know, there's like going to be parallel lines going-
Win-win.
Yeah. Same time.
Any other questions? Any questions for the mayors? Thank you, mayor.
Chris?
The matching, the million-dollar match would be state money, not, not federal money. Wouldn't be federal money coming into the state, coming to us, and it would be strictly state money?
No, no, it's the Connecticut Community Challenge Grants.
Okay.
And they have issued, actually, they did a whole Q and A and guidelines, et cetera. And they do specifically say ARPA funds can be used as a match.
And you did say whatever the grant request is going to be will come before this council before-
Of course. You always have to approve. I mean, for most state grants, you have to approve the applications.
Any other questions for mayor from? Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, mayor.
Katie?
Thank you, mayor. Okay, and the last item, E, John Pettybone Community Center, $150,000.
Thank you.
For-
Jack?
Oh, Jasmine, tell us.
Talk a little bit about Pettybone. And I know in speaking with Jack, one of the things that we've been doing, Jack, since he's been here, is really focusing on our capital. So before Jack was here, our capital plans were really, weren't really robust. So I asked Jack, well, with his wealth experience, and not only being DPW, but he also was the town manager for Berlin. And prior to that, in his private sector life, right? He, well, Jack, I'll let you explain what you do in your private sector life.
Had a lot of fun. As opposed to now? Oh, this is fun. But I worked for Toronti Company, Ingersoll Rand, in their, I guess it's their version of Public Works. It was the facilities department. And we were in charge of all the buildings worldwide. So I had the opportunity to build manufacturing plants in the United States and abroad, Czech Republic, China, and a few other places. So we had the opportunity to look at a lot of these things that we talk about here, just in a different scope. You know, the mayor and I were talking about a chilled water system. It's something that we worked on for years with the Toronti. So the mayor asked me about JPCC roof. And so Dave Martin and I took a tour of it last week, and we've talked about it many times. And I have expressed concern to the mayor about the roof. One of the problems right now is, like everything else, there's no material. So we met with a contractor on Friday, and what we developed for the mayor was a plan where what we'll do almost immediately is have our on-call contractor spend about 10 days on the roof, checking every seam, every, you know, if you go up there, there's different styles of roofs, looking at each kind of roof, and looking at any potential for water infiltration, so we can extend the life. Then the other thing I talked to the mayor about is, it's like our road projects, our brick projects, you know, it's nice to come before you and say, I want $5 million, $1 million, I want that. But we have a lot of competing desires. So what we talked about with the contractors, if you go up on the roof, you can easily separate that roof into different chunks. And the mayor said, okay, what, you know, what do you think, Jack? What do we need for, you know, to do a chunk? And I, we came to the realization, I guess, an agreement last Friday, about $150,000. I talked to the contractor. We can take and nicely chunk off that roof, and over the next four, five, six years, we will do a section of the roof at a time. And what it'll be based on is our evaluation, what we think is the most critical part of the roof, so that we're fixing roof as we go forward, just as we do with the roads. We pick, we pick the road we think is, needs to be repaired at this time. And the thing we're also doing with the bridges. So it's going to fit in with our ongoing capital plan. It beats though that we're not, we're not asking for, you know, we're going to be able to fit it in. It's not going to be this big jump or anything like that. And it allows the town council, the board of finance, to plan their money over the next 10 years.
Katie?
And I assume that this will, you'll pick the worst area, right?
Usually, that's what you do, yeah.
Well, yeah, you know, it's just, so you're going to move the bucket around, wherever. And so they go, they're going to seal up any of the seam areas where it's compromised?
Yeah, when we walk the roof, Katie, there, you can actually take the seams-
Yeah. Yeah.
-in places.
Yeah.
And so we walked it, and we identified areas. And so instead of trying to say, okay, we'll just do, he gave us a price for a daily rate, and if we give him about 10 days, that could cover the whole roof. So we figure we give him 10 days to go up there and seal the whole roof that gets us, so that now we could, you know, we don't have leaks, and we're able to move on.
Good. Thank you.
Mike?
I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't do something like that, let's say, so it's not a leak problem, but I hate to put money in the Pettibone until the town has a plan for it. And, you know, we have a plan, DPW, the Blue, downtown, so that Pettibone's kind of been this abstract thing. It's just, you hate to see money thrown at something that we don't even really know what we're exactly doing with it. And that's my only concern.
So Mike, great question, but currently, right now, that Pettibone facility is our max vaccine clinic. And right now, one thing we do know is we have no idea within the next year, right, where we're going to be with the pandemic. We have no idea. For instance, we had thought before that once you got your first vaccination, when we first did it, right? We thought, okay, well, this is going to be good for at least a year. Well, guess what? We found out with different variants coming through that you have to really get your va, your second vaccination, right, within eight months. Also, we're doing our flu clinic there as well. So one of the things we have to do as we're looking at all of our inventory, we have to be really cognizant that that building right now is our clinic. I mean, that's where we're getting, we're vaccinating our public. We're, we're, we're doing that. So we have to make sure if we're using that, and Mike, right now, we don't, I couldn't sit here and tell you, Mike, in six months, there's going to be no more need for our clinic. I have no idea. So we need to prepare for it. If that has some leakage in it, and if that's beginning to deteriorate, is what the Public Work Director's telling us, use these ARPA funds to get this roof-
Right.
-solid and situated as we continue to use this building as a vaccine, as a max vaccine site. We have to-
I guess, yeah, I guess my point is, and, you know, all right, eventually it'll tend to be over, well, in theory. So that, I mean, I just, I feel like at some point in the near future, putting the vaccine clinic there and using it for what it's designed, we need to have a plan for that building.
Absolutely.
Whether it's fix it up, whether it's run it over.
3,000%.
But, you know, we've been kind of putting that off, and I understand the pandemic underway. It's something that needs to be addressed.
I agree.
We're band-aiding a building that we eventually are going to sell or raise because it makes sense to do that, to do that.
But Mike, you being business yourself, right? You know that, how could you go in and tell the public, well, we're going to use it for this use, right? But we have no idea what the end use is going to be because right now, we're in the middle of a pandemic. So we have to plan, which is what Jack is doing, but, and I agree, the public needs to know, and we need to decide. But as of right now, we're working with the pandemic. I mean, that's where you guys are going to be tomorrow, right?
Right.
Plus, there's other offices in there as well.
Right. But if, for no other reason than having the clinic, you can't, you know, we can't take the risk of, well, we know the roof needs some work for sure, and so. I know what you're saying, Mike. Everybody feels that way, that we have to make a decision, and unfortunately, you don't want to spend a lot of money. But in this case, I, I'm just very happy that we have an opportunity to use ARPA funds for this, so that we're not taking it from some other place.
Okay. Very pleased, and I know you need much more than $150,000. I've seen the studies. And I'm assuming it's going to go on the back end, the wing that was added on?
We're going to start with that area.
Okay. Good. Yeah, well, as our health director indicated, this can be a clinic long beyond the pandemic with the flu shots, as the mayor said, and things like that. Parks and Rec is there, they have been there, the youth agency's been there, and, and Social Services, you know, they have private places where they can do. But I think we also might want to investigate, and I always wanted to when I was on the Board of Education. You know, we've been talking about technical education in tech schools and this, that, and the other. Community college tuition in Connecticut is now free. And I would suggest that the Economic Commission reach out to Nagatuck Community College and also to reach out to, and Winstead, Northwestern Connecticut Community College.
Dave, I'll answer your question for you. I already have.
Good.
I've done it to Nagatuck, Post, and the Northwest, and I can tell you exactly what they said. Nagatuck said, we've got a brand-new facility in Danbury.
Yeah.
So send your New Milford residents down there.
Yeah, and I know that Winstead, they expanded as well.
Correct.
However-
Post University was kind of on the fence about it, but right now, they've done their big, huge expansion into downtown Waterbury.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying that-
So Dave, I'm 1,000% in agreement with you. If we could bring a community college or technical college, it'd be great.
Don't necessarily have to have a branch of that magnitude, but for example, Parks and Rec has certain courses, you know, or like adult ed courses, where you have offerings in a classroom or whatever type of setting in the building. It doesn't have to be a whole big branch with signs, this, that, and the other, but rather weekly classes that you can sign up for, and if there's enough people that sign up for it, you run the class.
And I know, Dave, I know you know this because you were the board of ed chair. I know that Christie Martin has done a phenomenal job-
With adult ed.
-with adult ed. And I know they have plenty of room to expand in the high school-
There you go.
-for exactly what you're talking about, those type of classes.
And there we go. So what I'm saying is, I think as a community, we were talking about a gem earlier this evening, we have another gem right in front of us that complements it. And that's what we, and this brings it all together. Our former mayor is trying desperately to bring the quality of life much better here, and I see it all as connecting all the dots for everybody. That's all. Anyway, I strongly support this.
Okay. Mary Jane?
Yeah, I support it too. I just wonder if there's going to be enough money, and do we want to consider adding
a little additional money onto that?
Thinking, Jack, your plan kind of is at 150 for right now, and then we keep reassessing? Is that kind of plan?
That was, that was the plan. The plan was, the 150 is not the roof, I mean, the whole roof. It's in shot. What we're doing is, the first, the first amount of money is about $20,000, is 10 days of them with materials going around and patching, you know, making sure that there's no more water. And Dave and I were up there with them, and we're going to, you know, follow up with them, and we'll inspect them regularly to make sure there's no water infiltration. The first 150 is just a chunk of the roof. We're going to go off, you know, if we took it over a few of the, it was about 70,000 square feet, we would take a piece at a time. And the part I didn't address, Mary, that you and I talked about, was the material that we're going to, the first 150, we would do that roof over, would include insulation. So as you know, we're working with ESG to reduce the energy cost. It would be insulation, it would improve the, it would improve the, you know, the energy efficiency of the building. And the other thing, Tom, which we would like, as, as we go, the mayor asked me, we could put solar, as we do each part, we can start doing solar panels. At, at some point, we will, we will cross that, that payback analysis in the, in the building. If we, if, let's say this was going on for five, six years, and we do each section, at that point, we would have enough solar panels on the roof that the cost, you know, it would net out, so there would be no energy costs to the building, no electrical costs to the building.
We can't do, we can't do that maximum?
Yeah, still got heat.
We can't do all that maximum?
If you get the materials, I'd be glad to do it.
I guess my point is, like, you know, we're going to expend all this money because we have to, and we have a certain amount of time that has to be done. And so, like, if they need more money, and there's none left, you know, maybe now's the time to give them a little extra money.
I think, Mary Jane, what we might want to look at is the, the request that I brought to you guys before, and the fire company hasn't given me their total number yet. We were at about 7.6 million of the 7.9. So I think we might want to, before you add additional-
Right.
-trans to it, you may want to see what else will be coming into these funds.
What number did you have?
What's that?
You just said the number we're at.
7.9.
With all the, not the, with all the, remember all the recommendations I've been doing these issues? We're around 7.5, I think, is what it was. And then, and then that, I, I think, one of them included when we upped the amounts from the Hope Fund, we went from 60 to 100 each.
Yeah, because I meant 1.1 million.
Okay.
You have like two, yeah, 2.7.
So I haven't got the fire department in to come with their acquisition, you know, so.
But I'd like to say that I think it's really important to, you know, to care of the building for now, because of the people that are working in there. You've got leaks, you have to run the risk of mold, people getting sick, so that's a very big concern. It's a big health concern.
Yep. Chris?
Yep. I think my comments are more along the lines with Mike. I, I agree, we have a vaccination center there now. We need to make sure the building is inhabitable. I'm hoping we're not going to be in the vaccination business forever.
Surely not.
At some point, this is going to, whether the pandemic stops or not, we're, there's something else that's going to have to happen. And I want to remind everybody, about three years ago, there was a Facilities Utilization Committee that assessed all the property that the town owns and inhabits. And basically, the committee said, we own too much. We own more than we need. You know, we have Parks and Rec in Pettibone with some pretty sizable offices, but they also own condos, you know, behind Mitchell Oil. And we have floors of E Street that are empty and things like that.
But those items, those places, you didn't have anything that would have been appropriate for a vaccination clinic, right? No, I'm just saying that-
I'm saying it's appropriate where we're at.
Right, right.
But that's going to go away, or I think at some point, it needs to go away.
Well, there's a lot of other things in that building that are wrong.
Right. But then, then we will have to put plans to the town.
Exactly.
And I think the decisions aren't going to be made by people here. They're going to be made by our citizens on what we do with this building, so.
Right. And that's another reason why I think spending some money to fix the obvious issue that we could come up on for the winter with people in there and having water and, and the, the heat, the air conditioning. There's no controls for heat. Windows are open when the heat's on because there's no control of the heat. There's lots of, lots of, lots of things with that building that-
It's not for you. That's a-
You'd have to have somebody who, we'd have to have the other side of the equation that what we were going to use it for, let's say it was a college that came in, would have to really justify the amount of money, you know? And right now, it is what it is because a prior mayor said, this is what we're going to do, and those, those people moved in there, so now they're there. And our Board of Ed hasn't decided yet what they're going to do. So rather than, this is going to be a long, long-term discussion, and I understand, Mary Jane, what you're saying is, is it enough, maybe some more? But I think it is a bit of a rabbit hole, and you're right to say, take care of the obvious issue that could come with snow up on that roof, so.
All right.
No, I agree with Mike too. This gets us, what Pete said, this gets us to a point to where we can use it for foreseeable future, and then we have to reevaluate.
Yep.
I used to put windows in for a living, and I've walked around that building, and those windows are outdated. It's going to be a lot more than-
Outdated, oh my God.
A lot more than heating. It's going to need all new windows and stuff, but that's an argument for another day.
Right.
But for now, I think this gets us to a point, and then, like Councilman Cosgrove, it's going to be the people decide, because it's not going to be a couple hundred thousand dollars to fix that building. So that's something-
And we have all those other, other buildings, right, Chris?
Right.
That you're committed to. Have all the rest of them, right?
Can we vote on this, folks?
Sure. So-
No motion?
We have, I have, wait, well, I want to put the amount in. I have that here.
So can we, my, my question could be, Katie, since we all talked about this, can you make the motion A through E?
Yes. Yes, I will. And I have the, yes, with the amounts.
Yep.
So we're going to move on item 11, which would be to approve the distribution of ARPA funds as follows. Item A, youth agency, social worker slash LCSW counselor. Our total, this is a two-year trial, cost avoidance, $225,000. Item B, childcare assistance, $100,000. New Milford Senior Citizen Advisory Board, $75,137.75, with $19,335.65 to be used for the lunch program. The balance to be into an account that they'll set up to help seniors, such as our Hope Fund. Item D, the Brownfield Grant, Connecticut Community Challenge Grant Match, $500,000. Item E, John Pettibone Community Center, $150,000.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, everybody.
And the total of that came to $1,050,137.75. That's 75 cents. I don't know. I know, this cracks me up. Just cracks me up. I mean, you know, we got it, we had $2,012. Okay, item number 12.
All right, Greg, let's make this quick.
All right, Greg, the abbreviated version?
We've got a lot of money this week.
Right, right. And thank you, Jack, for your input.
Good evening. This is the financial update for September. Last Friday, our comptroller, Olga Melnikov, left New Milford. Olga was a dedicated and key member of the Finance Department and made numerous contributions to the town. She will be missed. I wish her well in her new role as Finance Director for New Mil, oh, New Fairfield, excuse me.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
Something happened to us.
No.
It's been a long night, Greg. It's been a long night.
That's, that's a Freudian slip.
No worries. Keep going, Greg. Keep going. It's almost 10.
While you have the time.
I am currently interviewing for this position, and I hope to make a selection sooner than later. The auditors are on site for the next two weeks, conducting the comprehensive audit of the town.
Oh, good.
The town received 2.7 million of waste management funds. There is one remaining payment. The balance in this fund is currently $19,261,112.7. Revenues.
Greg, real quick, for the council's edification. How much money did we use? Normally, we use that to offset taxes. We use a portion of those funds. Last year, how much did we use?
Zero. Zero.
That's awesome.
Seeing that we ran a surplus, I saw no reason to bring those funds, and it wouldn't have been a wise use of those funds.
Also, Greg, as Dave would, would, would know on the Board of Ed, we also use what's called Internal Service Fund, ISF funds, to help that as well. How much money did we use of the ISF last year?
Zero.
Thank you.
How much is in that?
How much is in that one, Dave?
Internal Service Fund? Well, we're slated to use a half a million dollars split between the town and the Board of Ed. Off the top of my head, close to $3 million. And I think that was three to two and a half, $3 million was our, our target to keep in that, to keep in that fund.
What are you going to be using for that you're taking out?
Pardon me?
You said you were taking some out of the Internal Service.
You said you were taking some out of the Internal Service Fund?
It's scheduled, it's budgeted in this year's budget.
How much?
$500,000. $250,000 for the board.
For medical purposes.
Of course. That's all it could be.
Yeah, I would clarify on the limit for medical in terms of, that's great.
Absolutely.
That's super.
Okay, on the revenue side, revenues are 48% of budget. On a straight-line basis, you would expect them to be at 25%. Tax collections are at 55.9% of budget overall, with current taxes at 51.9%. Both interest income and stiff interest are running at 20.2 and 18.6%, respectively. Most departments are averaging above the straight-line calculation. Expenditures. Expenditures on a cash basis are at 29% of budget. The majority of salary lines conform to the straight-line pattern as expected. Public Works' part-time seasonal line is over budget by approximately $1,300. Other than that, I see no other issues with expenditures at this point in time. In summary, on a cash basis, revenues are at $50,498,224.86. And expenditures are at $24,608,214.60, leaving the town with a positive cash flow of $25,890,010.26.
Any questions for Greg?
Just a real simple, the timing's always so hard to be think because you get your taxes at one point.
Right.
Just in general, what are we going to do, Jake?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, for the following. How much do we have in the contingency fund? And the, and again, on the undesigned fund? And the capital, which I always think is...
The, the, the undesigned will change after the audit, but currently we're at
Yeah.
$20 million in unassigned fund balance. Contingency, give me a second. We currently have $243,000 in the contingency fund.
243?
$243,000 as of today.
And capital? Capital reserve?
I don't have that number, Dave. I'll have to get that. I just have general fund information.
Thank you.
So, Greg, we have another payment of 2.7 left
Correct.
for the waste man.
Next fiscal year, we'll get it.
And that'll put us around 22 million?
Correct.
Any other questions?
We still, do you still have that investment?
It's winding down. As they, as they mature, I'm bringing that back into the stiff account. Really, there's, there's really no great investments out there.
No, yeah.
Stiff is like nine basis points. I never thought I'd hear myself say that.
So, it's tough to find, yeah, places to put money.
If you're, you're an investor, it's, it's tough. If you're a borrower, it, it's great.
Right.
So, it's a double-edged sword.
Weren't we getting like two and change percent at that one point, when you first did that?
Yeah.
That's...
Around 2% for, what, for waste management?
No, you were getting interest on, on that money before, when you put it in.
A couple of years ago.
It was about 2.1.
On...
I know that you, you would up it, and it almost doubled what we were making on the interest at that time.
In your revenue line before, a couple of years ago, you were, for stiff, not with waste management, you were talking about we were getting about 2%. Now, we're getting up.
That fell off the cliff.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
But we were making something.
Yeah, we were then.
Something better than nothing.
Yeah, something was better than nothing.
My basis points.
Yeah. Thank you, Greg.
And the Internal Service Fund is the same thing.
Right.
You know, it's not, you know...
It's not 1985, no.
Yeah, I was going to say.
This isn't a poll bar and runaway inflation, they...
But it's not 0.25% like your savings.
Right.
Any, any other questions for Greg? Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, Greg. Good luck on the, the campaign.
Look like you're already getting a little grayer since Olga left.
The waiver market is extremely thin. I've interviewed three people, and, you know, I structure my interviews where I separate the men and women from the boys and girls because I give situational, this, this really cuts to the bone. I give situational accounting questions. And you interview people, they look great on paper, they say they're accountants, say they have accounting degrees. But when I start, you know, when I put them on the carpet, they're like deer in headlights, so it's...
Figuratively.
Figuratively, of course. Good luck with the search. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay.
You've been on Police Department.
So, moving on, item 13, move to, move, I moved to move $29,000 from contingency for a, this is from the Police Department, for additional traffic enforcement.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. In speaking with Chief Serrudo and from the public at large, one of the number-one issues that we have facing the town is speeding, traffic enforcement, and those people that choose to go through the red lights when a bus has its bus red lights on.
Incredible.
Just going through red lights anywhere.
So, in speaking with the chief, we want to really show additional, some of our additional troops to go out and really tackle this, especially around this time of year. And with the Town Council's approval, we'd like to take that, contingency, the chief can, can do additional patrols.
No problem.
Dave?
I absolutely double it as far as I'm concerned. But I just feel that the contingency fund is so low for the town of our size, 243,000. Would it be an issue, or not prudent, or prudent to take it from the undesigned fund, which is...
I would, I would recommend, Dave, not doing that because that's, this is operational funding. I wouldn't recommend taking it for that, for operational funding. That would be a red flag to the auditors that you're doing it that way.
With the undesigned?
That's great. Greg, you tell you.
Can we?
We have a fund balance policy that really doesn't allow for...
Can, can we transfer from the, from the undesigned fund into other accounts? We'd have to be able to.
If we have an issue with contingency, we would allocate more money to something else, but right now?
No, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
243,000.
No, no, I support it. I'm just asking.
Within the budget, there's a couple, you know, there's a line item that I budget for, to use the undesigned fund. Every year, it's a quarter million dollars, and thankfully, we've never used it.
Yeah, no, I'm just asking if it can be transferred to other accounts. That's the only question I have.
Budget, anyway.
So, I'm assuming that's a yes?
There has to be some way to move it. That's up to Greg, then. You're looking, all looking at me. Don't look at me, but I can answer.
You can do that later.
No, I'm just, I understand that.
Okay, so the motion...
You have a question for Greg or not?
Yeah, I just asked it. I didn't, didn't answer.
He asked a question.
He didn't, he didn't hear it.
That if we can transfer from the undesigned fund into other accounts in the budget.
I don't have the fund balance policy in front of me, but it allows for certain things. You can't really...
Okay.
I'll get you a copy of the fund balance policy. And that will lay out exactly what unassigned fund balance can be used for.
Sure, would you tell all of us? Because I'd like to know.
Sure.
I mean, you know, we're going into budget season. We should...
Well, we have money in contingency.
I understand.
I mean, that's what it's for.
No, we're just curious as to how you get money out of the undesigned.
I would just increase the appropriation.
But we, okay, there you go. Okay, so the motion is...
We have a motion, and we have a second.
We have a second.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Great.
Thank you.
I know, it's, it's, it's tough, isn't it? Okay, item number 14, economic development update from Mayor Bass.
I'll give a very brief and quick update. We continue to, we continue to see strong growth in our permits, both on the commercial and residential side. Speaking with Bill Murphy today, we had another three permits for residential homes that were done.
Residential, great.
Today, yeah. So, we're seeing some strong growth there. We had a Citron Nutrition that just opened up in Laurie's Plaza.
Oh, yeah.
For those that want to go in and get a nutritional shake or a protein waffle. Very nice family that just opened up there. So, that's great to see, that, that spirit. We continue to have people use our DST, which are Department Services Teams meetings. Hopefully, I'll be able to announce in the next few weeks some initial, additional bigger businesses that will be coming to New Milford. I can't really say as, as of right now, but very excited at the prospect of some of these new businesses coming into town.
Great.
Things that they have told me that they really like, quality of life, affordability, workforce. So, we're all very excited about that, and I'll be giving you guys some more data at our next Town Council meeting.
I'm sure Diane Bagel's out. I'm still excited.
Exactly.
Probably December, yeah.
So, Diane Clay's having a bagel shop. That's right by the...
Red Barn Bagels.
Yep, right in the Red Barn, next to Savings Bank of Danbury. She did give me a cinnamon raisin bagel that she made. It was pretty good, I gotta say. Pretty good, I gotta say. Yes.
You got a bagel before I did?
I did. Sorry.
Mayor.
Mayor, just quickly, in terms of grand, grand list growth on the business side, that's still healthy this year?
Absolutely. And I'm going to be asking at our next Town Council meeting for Brian to give to the council the breakout in commercial and residential, and the growth trajectory that we're seeing due to the growth here in New Milford.
Good.
Perfect.
Can I just, I just wanted to say something about economic development. I had several things to shop for. I had some time. I went around downtown, all the stores, tried, you know, spent a little money in every, every place I went. And I didn't, not all knew who I was or anything. I was just a customer. But, you know, I said, "Oh, you know, your store's really nice, you know, oh, do you really, do you like it here? Are you glad you opened up here?" They all said the same thing. They love it. Just love it.
They were the same thing.
Yeah, I, it's just that there's something about the vibe of it, you know?
Yep.
Are we still in the red zone?
Yes, we are. They, they do it every two weeks. And what we saw in the red zone and talk with Lisa, there were two trance, two trances of youth that were unvaccinated, the majority of them. And they were the ones that created the trajectory of our, of our increase in COVID numbers.
Were they the 12 and over?
Uh, some were a little bit in the 17 age, age bracket. Some were a little lower than that.
Lower than 12?
Yeah, and what we were seeing was that they did, they did not come from the schools. They came from extracurricular activities. And what happened was when they came home and were quarantined, obviously, they gave it to their other sibling that was in the, the household, and then to a parent. We didn't see any community spread, so we're going to begin to see those numbers. Like today, the numbers were down again. We're going to be able to see those numbers again to go down. So, in speaking with Lisa, when we saw that, we saw that's where those numbers were germinating from, which is what caused that uptick was in that respect.
It's so subtle that it can change, you know? Couple of, couple of...
Is that even bad? Is it even six, seven, it's in the bad, or is it, they're pretty good?
Not that I'm aware of. Hospitalizations went down again in the entire county. I believe now we're at six or seven for the entire county of Litchfield, so that's great news as well. But we continue to monitor at least twice a day.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.